And we are very grateful to have such amazing people playing that role in the lives of our children. And we have a great representative today from Putnam City Schools, Shadana Watkins. And we would like to learn a little bit more about you. And so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Shadana Watkins has been named Teacher of the Month for December 2019 by the Putnam City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Shadana received her bachelor's degree in child development from Langston University before working in a preschool classroom under a literacy first grant. Whereas Shadana worked in the Child Development Laboratory on the campuses of Langston and Rose State for more than a decade as a teacher, assistant director, and the director. Shadana has taught full-time and currently teaches adjunct in Langston's Child Development and Early Childhood Education Departments. And she also serves on their Family and Consumer Sciences Advisory Board. Whereas Shadana moved to teaching kindergarten and first grade at Putnam City's Two Lakes Elementary School, where she has served since 2016. Shadana was named Putnam City Schools Teacher of the Year in 2019. Whereas Shadana's lifelong mission is to educate young minds so they understand that learning is fun. Whereas Shadana accomplishes all this with the support of her best friend and husband, Willie Watkins, and their three children. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Shadana Watkins on her selection as the December 2019 Teacher of the Month by the Putnam City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
I'm sure you noticed she is in fact the entire district's Teacher of the Year for 2019. And a special aspect to that is that she is a Putnam City North grad. So she brought it back home. And we are honored to have you with us today, Shadana. This is a resolution, and so it does in fact require a vote of the council. So is there anyone who would like to make such a motion? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You are the Teacher of the Month. Would you like to say a few words, Shadana? I know the answer's no, but just do it anyway.
Thank you. I'm so honored just to have this opportunity. And I'm representing one of the best school districts in the state of Oklahoma and across the nation. And I'm just really honored to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do every single day. Let's thank Shadana one more time. Sergeant? Where'd he go? Oh. Now, you knew you were coming up here, but you sat in the back row anyways. You wanted a dramatic entrance. All right. Sergeant Swearengen? Is that pretty good? Pretty good? All right, very good. We are honored that you serve every day, the people of Oklahoma City. We have the greatest city employees in the country, and we love to recognize them every month. You are about to be, we believe, on the cusp of being the Employee of the Month. And we would like to learn a little bit more about you. And so I'd ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Sergeant Raymond Swearengen has been a city employee for 16 years and is the Police Department's Derelict Vehicle Enforcement Officer. Whereas Sergeant Swearengen investigates all derelict vehicle concerns reported throughout the city, often finding stolen vehicles which can be identified and returned to the owners. Throughout his career, Sergeant Swearengen has responded to more than 9,300 calls and tagged over 4,700 vehicles as derelict, often resulting in residents contacting the Action Center to express their satisfaction with his responsiveness. Whereas in 2019, Sergeant Swearengen has responded to more than 3,300 calls, tagging 1,780 vehicles, impounding 81, and he issued 604 citations. Sergeant Swearengen has shown the highest level of customer service throughout his career, working closely with Action Center manager to de-escalate neighborhood issues. Sergeant Swearengen also addresses residents' concerns with kindness and professionalism, often going out of his way to help anyone at any time. Whereas Sergeant Swearengen has received multiple letters of appreciation from residents, organizations, and other governmental entities for his professionalism and attention to detail. Whereas this council desires to recognize Sergeant Raymond Swearengen for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Sergeant Swearengen, December 2019, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
All right, thank you. Now Sergeant Swearengen lives in southwest Oklahoma City. I believe he is your constituent, Councilman McAtee. You think that's right? Yes, all right. Would you like to make the motion? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You are the Employee of the Month. Now, I hope you listen carefully. In 2019 alone, which is not even completed yet, you have responded to more than 3,300 calls and tagged 1,780 vehicles. When you see a derelict vehicle in the city of Oklahoma City, it's Sergeant Swearengen. There's no one else who does what you do. And so that's a remarkable workload, and thank you for doing that. And obviously, that does mean a lot to our neighborhoods. So thank you for your service. Would you like to say a few words?
I would. I just, I'm so honored and privileged to receive this award. And I accept it on behalf of the Action Center, the command staff, and the leadership within the city. I'm very proud to work where I do. And in fact, on the side of our police cars, it says, "We serve with pride." I take that to heart, and I will continue to do that throughout the rest of my career.
Well, thank you. Let's thank him one more time. All right, now we return to the agenda, where we are still on Office of the Mayor. Item 3 on page 1. We have item 3C. This is a resolution improving travel and reimbursement for me to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors Civic IO Mayor Summit in Austin in March. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and with the required six affirmative votes. We also have item 3D, Appointment of Rob Littlefield to serve as a member of the Traffic and Transportation Commission. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're on item 4, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're at item 5, Requests for Uncontested Continuances. I see we already have listed here item 11A1 to strike. Mr. City Manager, are there any other further items?
Yes. We also have on page 24, item 9N1 and 2. We're going to strike that item. The owner has repaired that structure. The location of that is 901, it's item A. So N, I'm sorry, N1 and 2, and then... I'm sorry. Yes. So it's item N1 and 2, and item, it's item 1A, N1 and 2 both, and includes A, which is 901 East Drive. And the owner's repaired that structure. And then on page 25, we have item 901, Unsecured Structures. Item F will strike all of these items from the agenda. 2237 Northwest 22nd Street, the owner has secured. Item H, 1534 Northwest 32nd Street, the owner has secured. Item J, 1300 Southeast 40th Street, the owner has secured. Item O, 809 Northeast 81st Street, the owner has secured. And then on page 25, under 9P1, Abandoned Buildings. Item F will strike this item from the agenda. It's 1300 Southeast 40th Street, the owner has secured. And then items 9Q1 and 2. This is the Capitol Hill Business Improvement District, and these items, we need to do some more work on the district boundaries, and so those items will be stricken as well. And that is all that I have.
So on 11A2, we will retain that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on. We have no revocable permits today. Too cold to do anything outside. So we will recess the council meeting. We will convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have items A through F, but I believe we have a presentation on item A that may also bridge some other items as well.
Yes, so Brent Bryant, our Finance Director, is going to make a presentation this morning. So we have several, you notice in your packets, there are several of the financial statements, including our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the entire city and the city organization. But we also have the financials for the MFA, for the PPA, and for the Oklahoma City Economic, I mean, the Environmental Assistance Trust. And so Brent's just going to make a presentation on all of these items to cover those. Those items are in the packets under the appropriate places in their agenda. And Brent will just cover all of those right now.
Thank you. Good morning, Brent Bryant, Finance Director. As the City Manager said, we have five year-end reports that we're going to go over with you this morning. And the first one, but before I get started, I want to acknowledge our Controller Laura Pappas, along with our Assistant Controller Alex Fedek, and Kristy Jamison, along with our entire accounting team. They're here. If they wouldn't mind standing, I would appreciate it, just so you can see. These are the people behind the scenes, accounting for all of our dollars, the citizens that provide to us. And they do a great job, and I'd just like to recognize them and thank them for their efforts.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, before we get started, I, before I start going through the report, there are certain terms that I wanted just to go over with each one of you that you'll see in these reports. One of them is the net position. That's one way that we calculate and view the overall health of a fund. One is the major indicator of the health, financial health of an organization. Net position is defined by all your assets and resources that are available, less all liabilities and obligations. You're going to hear me say that time and time again as I go through this presentation about what's the net position. The other one is GAAP basis. That's when we, when you accrue things, but when they're earned or when they're incurred, whether it's a revenue expenditure. And then there's the budgetary basis of accounting, which is my preferred, because you count cash when you receive it, you count it as an expense, and you actually write the check. And so those are just kind of some of the terms that we use as we go through this. The Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority is the first one. We use this fund primarily for our health insurance and our workers' comp. In addition, we use it for our property liability insurance, along with our nuisance abatement. And we use it for long-term contracts for our IT department. In addition to that, we use it, this is where we put money for advanced A and E, for general obligation bonds, where we'll advance the funds and we'll go out and start the advancing of the A and E. So when we actually issue the GO bonds, the plans and specs are ready, the idea that we can get those projects completed in a more timely manner. They ended the year at a net increased position of $36.7 million, which is a net increase of 34.4. And this cost remained relatively flat, even though there were charges, the charges increased. The Oklahoma City Public Property Authority is a entity that we utilize to operate our golf courses, the South Oklahoma City Fairgrounds, along with the convention center, the current convention center, and it will also include in the future the new one, the Chesapeake Arena and other city buildings. We also account for our Business Improvement Districts. We have five of them right now. I won't name them all, but there they are. Overall, the net position is $62.7 million, which is a decrease of $2.7 million over the last year. And primarily, it had to do with capital assets, the civic center operations going, being contracted out, and capital assets depreciation. In addition to that, the golf courses are included in the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. They had a net position of $48.48 million, which is an improvement of about $700,000. Fairgrounds had a negative net position of 22.3 compared to last year's of 19.3. This is normal, because in some of these instances, you'll see a trust will go out and issue debt, and then it will use that debt for an asset, but that asset will be counted on a different set of books. So that's the typical thing with some of our trusts. It's primarily, if you look at the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, that happens a lot, where we have incurred debt, but then we actually provide assistance to someone, and we don't get a corresponding asset in return. So that's why, that's why you end up with a negative type situation. The Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust provides resources for the operation, the collection, and disposal. It ended the year with a $9.2 million increase at $61.8 million. This is a very well-run trust. The Utilities Department does a great job with that. And they use this for capital projects, and they also use it for rate stabilization. In addition to it, they, when we have storms that come through, this is where they access the funds to do storm debris removal and stuff like that. The city's CAFR, also known as the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, had a net position of $2.3 billion for 2019, which is an increase from 2.1. Our component units, which include the trusts, had a net position of $1.6 billion, which is an increase of, from $1.5 billion. Total assets increased about $200 million due to the following issuance of bonds, GO bonds increases in sales and use tax funds, increase in donated capital, and increase in current assets, non-current assets. From a fiduciary standpoint, our net position, when you look at the different funds that we have, like the Oklahoma City Employee Retirement System, also known as OKERS, the Copper Retirement Fund, and then the OPEB Trust. And the OPEB Trust is for Post-Employment Benefits Trust that we have, that we were required to set up many years ago. The net position is $834 million, which is about a $23 million increase. Majority of the net comes from OKERS, which is the Employee Retirement System, which has a net pension asset of 103.92%. And that's, you'll hear stuff about other pensions throughout the country, about pension funds not being fully funded. In this case, ours is. And that's something to be very proud of, and that has to do with the conservative financial management of the council over the years, and just the way things have been done. OPEB is funded at 12.1%. That's a, it's going to take a while to build that one up, but it increased in one year from 8.6, it went up to 12.1. And finally, fund balance. We ended the year with all our funds. We had $1.2 billion, which is an increase of $13.4 million. From a general fund or GAAP basis, the general fund had $164 million, which is an increase of $22 million from the prior year. But from a cash basis standpoint, or budgetary basis, the general fund ended the year at $102.6 million, which reflects a 21.3 million, 21.3% of the city's general fund budget for this fiscal year, which is, this is one thing that the rating agencies look very heavily upon when they're evaluating our ratings. And this is a very strong, when we look at, we did a comparison of how other cities do. And like the city of Tulsa, I think they were around 15%, and we're at 21. We do very well here, and that's a testament of, again, to council and their conservative management of the city. The Single Audit, this is where the, our AGH, our External Auditors, look at our, all of our federal and state grants that we received for the year. The state assistance that we received this year was right at $1 million, where the federal government provided us about $49 million. We had no material findings, and it's for our fourth consecutive year. We are considered a low-risk auditee by the, by our external auditors. And so we have been that for the last four years. And as a result of that, we have a low risk status, reduces the percentage of grants that are required to be audited, which results in a savings to the city. So again, I'd like to, again, thank the accountants that we have here that have worked extremely hard for the last four months. They take a lot of, a lot of work and cram it in for about a four-month period as when the fiscal year ends. And can't thank them enough, and be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Brent, so not for the purposes of this audit report, but when you come before us in a few months to do the budget for the 20-year end, on the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, can you provide us with a breakdown of the revenue and expenses of the culture and recreational services?
Sure.
So, you know, this year, we saw a decline in revenue of $4 million, and a loss grew from $10 million to $13 million. So could you just give us a breakdown?
Yes, I'll be happy to get you a breakdown.
Back with the budget. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brent? Comments? Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you to you and your team. Appreciate it. All right, so that means we have all the items under OCMF A. Items A through F we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCMF A and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through D we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have items A and B we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on page 4 of your printed agenda, the Consent Docket, item 7. And we have one scheduled presentation, item BM.
BM, that's right.
And is there anything else that anybody wants to pull out for discussion or separate vote?
Mayor, if I could just pull out BP, not for a separate vote, but just for a quick word.
Okay.
BP.
Boy Paul.
Okay.
Your Honor, I'd like to discuss 7R, please.
R. Okay. All right. Oh, go ahead.
Will, can I, can you give me some time and we talk about these other things that I'll find exact?
Sure, sure, yeah. Okay, so we'll take what we have currently in order, which means we'll start with Councilman Stonecypher. You wanted to mention item R.
Thank you. Item R is a widening project, roadway reconstruction improvements on North MacArthur. I get a lot of questions about this road, so I think it's important to note that the construction will begin September 2020. And today, we are awarding the contract to TJ Campbell Construction. Heavily-traveled road and our award, and much-needed improvement is forthcoming, and should take about a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, as we move through, I'll draw your attention to item AU, which is accepting the election results from the 1% tax passed last week that will fund the MAPS4 program. And certainly, a great opportunity to compliment and thank the staff for all the vetting and thoughtful work that was done over the spring and summer to bring us to this point. And of course, now the real work begins. But thank you to the people of Oklahoma City, and congratulations to everyone. I would also want to mention AV. Just anytime I see philanthropy on the agenda, I always want to acknowledge it if I don't forget. And so certainly, a thank you to In His Much Foundation for the donation of the restoration and renovation of some of our centennial clocks. And then, we'd already heard a presentation on BA. And that brings us, I believe, to BM for the presentation we already have scheduled.
Yes, so David Todd and Doug Dowler. David Todd, our MAPS manager, program manager, and Doug Dowler, our budget director, gives a presentation. There were some questions on this item before when we went out for the bid, and we've got the bids in, we're ready to award those. And so I wanted to have them just give a quick presentation, both on what we're doing with the project, as well as the financial analysis that was done on the potential for revenue that it'll produce.
Hi, David Todd, MAPS program manager. As City Manager Freeman just said, we're here to talk about the surf machine that will be in the boathouse area that is part of the map. So if you remember, there was some additional monies that were allocated towards things at the Boathouse Foundation. We had an estimated cost that was created by the architect and our office, and we had $1.45 million. The low bid ends up being $1.965. That is a little more than what we had as our estimate. But, you know, discussing that among ourselves, we think it's still a reasonable cost. And you can also see that the other bid that we, the other responsive bid that we received was more than that. So we have confidence that it's not an outlier. And because of this, this over budget per se, what we will do is we will scale some other things back further in the program per se, the additional items that we're going to do, some of those will be scaled back a little bit to make up for this, so that we stay within that new budget that we have. We did, as I said, receive other bids. The Pacific Surf Designs bid was unresponsive, didn't have affidavits and bonds. It really wasn't responsive to the advertisement itself, in that they just bid the cost of the machine. They didn't bid the foundation. They didn't bid the electrical and the water. They were just trying to get out there and try and sell their machine, and it was misguided on their part. So we're confident with the number that we have. As far as the economics on this, I'd like to turn it over to Doug Dowler, and he will talk to you about some of that.
Good morning. Doug Dowler, Budget Director for the city. The foundation prepared a pro forma to look at the impact of the surf machine on their operating. And they've estimated expenses of about $70,000, with revenue generated of about $320,000, so a gain of $250,000. And so our staff, we've looked at this, projections, and we do feel it's a conservative projection. They did not include additional sales of their all-attraction pass that allows you to do the rafting, the zip line, the surfing. They just looked at if people just buy the surfing pass, just that single attraction, that would generate the $250,000. If this generates additional sales of those all-attraction passes, there will be more revenue available to the foundation for operations there of the adventure program. So we do feel that this is a reasonable estimate, that this would generate about a quarter million dollars a year to help with the bottom line at the Boathouse Foundation. One of the other questions was just in terms of where these facilities are located. There are about, there are four of these in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. There are a couple up in the Kansas City area, and then there's one in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. There are not any of the surf attractions anywhere in the state of Oklahoma. So this will be the first one in Oklahoma. And so, again, we feel that this is going to be a significant improvement to the bottom line at the foundation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I do have a question. So when we were briefed on this a few weeks ago, the Plano and the Baton Rouge, as well as Kansas City locations, I actually called them to see, I wanted to find out how, how much do their entrance use of their machines cost? And the city of Plano in particular said, "It's just a $5 or $6 entry fee." So I was curious, especially if, I guess, the operations, and I understand that any additional revenue would then help other operations of the Boathouse Foundation, but I'm very curious if there's a way for us to get to that $5 to $6 price range? Because to me, $19 a rider, and I know that's a day, but so is the $5 or $6.
What's the $5 or $6, and I just don't know the situation there. Is that, once you're in their park, you pay that? Or is that the admission to their?
That's the entrance fee to their park.
To do, okay. I'm not familiar with that situation. I'd have to look at that. And I don't know, do they, are they subsidized by the city to make that cost? So I guess that would be a choice to make of how much the city wants to support that.
That's something that we want to, because what we're trying to work on right now is work with the foundation, as they're trying to improve their financial position, and that any reduction in costs there would be, I mean, you could, you could get to the place where you're actually just making a very small amount of money. And our goal was to try to help put this whole package together that helps with the financial operations of the whitewater facility. If we wanted to make a decision anywhere in there to offer some kind of discounted passes or something else, I think that would have to be a part of additional funding from the city that would help offset that, where they're trying to make sure that they're dealing within the market where they can sell a sufficient number. And so I think it's something that we would have to make a decision on at that time.
Well, I'm, because again, almost $20 is a lot for a family, especially if you're not just one person. And, and again, I do understand that this revenue would offset another, I guess, in theory, city-owned facility, although I personally have very... although I personally have very grave concerns about being able to trust the books of the Boathouse Foundation given information that was shared with us about how they've withheld information from the city. But I want to see ways for us to support the operations of this specifically city-owned entities at the, in the Boathouse District so that low-income and middle-income families can actually afford to go there.
Okay.
I had a question about the, you know, I know we reject bids sometimes. What did, how do we decide on whether or not the bids come in too high to where we reject them or where we still accept them even if they're above what we thought it was going to be?
Well, part of that is that we received that second bid that was higher than that one, so that we're confident that both of them were in that same ballpark. We're confident that's probably the number that it ought to be. Then the thought is, well, we could reject bids, but will they possibly bid it again? And what are the ramifications on that? And then we also talked to the contractor about why it might be higher. And some of it was that because of the location of where this surf machine is going to go, there's going to be damage to existing things that they'll have to replace, like sidewalks. It'll get cracked and broken, and they'll have to pull those out and replace them. So that was some of the things that we didn't have in there.
Is it, were you expecting more than just three bids? Or really two?
Yeah, we always hope that we get more than that. I'm glad when we get at least two so that we can compare them. But typically, we like to get about five.
Yeah, right.
But on, at the boathouse, some of the projects are so unique, we're finding that it's, a lot of contractors don't want to take that risk. And this is the contractor that built the original whitewater facility. So he does have knowledge of everything that's out there.
Okay, thanks.
I've got a comment. So when this was presented earlier, I just didn't give it too much thought, thinking, well, we'd already approved this, I'm going to use the term, $8 million. But then I began thinking about this and reviewed our council meeting from October 9, 2018. Three significant, one in particular, misrepresentations were made during that presentation. One, the whole issue was urgency, that the money had to be provided to them that month so that they could then spend the money on projects so they would have them available for the summer of 2019. That time is past. The money has not been spent. So I no longer feel committed to spending the money at this time and feel like, as the discussion took over 30 minutes a year ago, to put them back with the other projects. I'm not denying this at this time. I'm just saying, let's hold off on funding it until all of the projects for MAPS-3 have been completed. And we know for sure exactly how much surplus we have, and then divide it among the projects at that time. Perhaps that would encourage us to complete the three remaining projects that have yet to be started as well as, you know, begin to take a serious look at what projects, what other projects we want to fund. The other misinformation that was presented to us at that time was that by funding the boathouse, they would not be back before the council seeking funds. Now, I need to qualify that seeking funds for MAPS-3. But at the time, when they said no longer coming back to the council seeking funds, I did not anticipate we would be funding them out of our operating budgets. So based upon that, I don't feel obligated to allow this to go forward at this time. I'm not suggesting we deny this expenditure, but just put them back with the other programs and look at it all at once. Thank you.
I'd like to say, now that I have been to one of the meetings for the Boathouse Foundation, it has helped me to understand a lot of why they are in the position that they're in. And unfortunately, as we've said in our previous council meetings, one of the things that we know is that they have not fully told their story when it comes to what the Boathouse Foundation is, where they've come from, and exactly where they are as it pertains to very, very generous donations. And their founder, as we know, passed away. And therefore, they had to restructure and say, we have to go back to the drawing board and start this over. And I will say, again, even at the meeting I attended, which was December the 5th, the main thing that we talked about was the restructuring of the board. So they're having an issue all around when it comes to just the board structure. And unfortunately, I know that, obviously, that has nothing to do with us, but at the same time, it does. Because therefore, because of what they're going through, without them just saying upfront, this is what has happened to us, now we have to bear their burden, if that's a word to use for this. So that's where I see the unfortunate part of the miscommunication as to the Boathouse Foundation and what has happened. And I don't take away from that October meeting because all of us, I believe, left a little frustrated with the process of just not saying what has taken place and saying, this is where we are. So again, I do think that there are some things we probably should pause on to allow them to restructure their foundation and rely and see how they can get more and better support. And I also agree that we do have an issue when it comes to this whitewater facility and the community that's around it who are unable to be a part of it. And I know they're looking at ways for scholarship opportunities and ways to fill those gaps for some of our underserved communities. But again, this is a foundation issue, and it's unfortunate that we're in the loop of that foundation issue. But if I can speak, I can just say for them that they are going through a reconstruction phase of their board, and this is just a very unfortunate time for all of us right now when it comes to that.
Well, again, thank you for that information. That even encourages me further to postpone granting the release of these funds if they are going through restructuring. And again, if we go through with this process and allow the funds to be spent, we're inviting other people, groups, organizations, making presentations to us with false information. Now, those issues that were presented back in October of 18 were very significant. We would have had a vote had it not been for the fact that this was so urgent, but yet, over a year later, the funds have not been spent. And so I'm just going to leave it at that. I think it's inviting others to come forward, not be concerned with the accuracy of the information presented to us if we move to pass this expenditure.
I would mention also that what was presented at that time with the urgency, that it was their desire to have that, the foundation's desire to have that in place to be able to operate for the season. But in reality, when we started working through the design process, and we managed the project through our MAPS office, when we worked through the design and all, it was just not realistic that we would be able to get it done. That was the desire, but we weren't able to get that done. So it wasn't the foundation delaying that. That was still their desire. They would have loved to have had that additional revenue at the time. So I just wanted to make sure and clarify that.
Craig, that should have been brought back to this council and allowed us to reconsider our action.
Understand.
All right, any other comments or questions on this topic? Councilman McAtee.
Can somebody articulate exactly where we do stand on all of this?
In, I mean, right now, we're in the process of, you know, we agreed to do a $1.5 million additional payment to the foundation for this year, a total.
Talking about the operating?
Right, the operations. Is that what you're talking about, the operations, or where we are with the projects? Okay, so with the operations, we're still in the process that they provide financial information to our finance department every month. We're looking at that and reviewing that. I think we've paid about $1.1 million.
And by the end of this month?
By the end of this month, it'll be $1.1 million. They'll need less as we go into the months where they're down. I mean, they don't have as much revenue flowing in, but we won't be requiring as much. Our expectation is by the end of the year, by the end of the fiscal year, that we will have paid that $1.5 million. And we'll be talking with them, because they had made their request originally that they would need funding going into next year as well, and we'll have discussions with them about that. On the projects, David, can you give us an update on the capital, on the additional funding in the projects?
I can. We have final plans in our office right now for that second-floor build-out that we've talked about, the second floor of the main building, building into an event space, something that's usable. And then also the plans for a new zip line that goes across the whitewater area. Those are in our office. We're reviewing those. Our plan is to have those to the subcommittee in January, and then it will come to this body to go out for bids for the second floor and for the zip line late January or early February, whatever, however that meeting falls after our subcommittee meetings. And we continue to work on, once we get those bids, we'll work on the additional things that are listed, you know, some water features and some of that kind of stuff with that additional money.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this topic? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, Your Honor.
Yes.
Can we vote on this issue separately from the others?
Certainly. So you want to go ahead and handle that? We don't have a motion on the table. Would you like? In a sense, you're moving. Someone else needs to move it. You probably don't want to move it because you're going to vote no. So, okay. So would someone like to move item BM? I'm not sure. Okay, so if there's no motion, then it still sits there, but it will be.
I'll postpone funding this until all of the, until we can review all the projects from the circle. That'll be awarded.
I wish the turning was here. Okay, so you're asking essentially a deferral of that item?
I'm pretty flexible. I just don't think.
I'm just trying to characterize it in a way that's, that's.
I mean, I could just move.
Defer indefinitely? Is that a thing we can do?
Until such time as we can, and David, this is not directed towards you.
I understand.
You've got the MAPS Oversight Committee and a lot of other people to get those other three remaining projects started and moving forward. So my comment towards that issue is not directed towards you.
Right. I just want to point out, though, that if it's not awarded, they will have to rebid it because it will extend too far to just hold on and give it to them.
No, I understand. Yeah.
So your motion is to defer indefinitely, which means it's, at any point, it could come back. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
Can I just say something real quick?
Todd, if there's not a second, it dies, but go ahead.
I'll wait.
Is there a second to that motion to defer indefinitely?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a second. Now, comments.
Thank you. I kind of agree with Councilman Greenwell, but more so, I think, on the other projects. The additional zip line, the additional water features. To me, with this one, we at least have a pro forma that suggests it's going to improve their bottom line, which, for me, makes me want to go ahead and improve this one, but almost take back the other ones and say, there's no pro forma on it. Is this water feature really going to improve their production over there?
Yeah, and I think to piggyback on that, I would say that we just had professional staff tell us this will diminish their need for operating subsidy by quarter of a million dollars, which means that's a quarter of a million dollars they're not going to be asking us for six months from now or whatever. And that's hard to walk away from.
Let me ask you this, then. Are you suggesting that this, because we've been, in a sense, have at least verbally committed to fund them another $1.5 million out of operations next year?
Oh, I don't know that that's, I don't feel like I've.
We don't have the commitment yet, that's something we're going to evaluate with them. But they did request that.
Right. Okay, then, let me say it this way. Are we prepared not to exceed $1.25 million, $1,250,000 in terms of funding for next year instead of the proposed $1.5 million?
Oh, your mic's not on. But we heard you.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I don't feel like we're committed to anything, so I don't.
Oh, I think it's obvious that we were told we needed to fund them $1.5 million for operations this year and to expect them being back a year from now asking for another $1.5 million. That's why we're getting these monthly financial statements or quarterly.
All right.
Okay.
Ready to vote?
Well, has a second been made?
Yes, Councilman Greiner made a second.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes.
Motion to defer indefinitely. So a yes vote is to defer it indefinitely, and no vote is to essentially leave it on today's consent docket. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Motion fails four to five. Okay, we're back on the consent docket. You want to move on to BP? Councilman Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a donation agreement between Fields and Futures Foundation in the park area at Southern Oaks Park at 6818 South Walker Avenue. And I just wanted to highlight again some of the great work that Fields and Futures does in our community, whether it's with Oklahoma City Public Schools, rebuilding the fields, rebuilding youth fields all over town, working with parks, helping to stretch our parks' capital dollars. And this is really another case of that. The estimated value of the contribution is $673,000 and change. And, you know, I just, I can't say enough about Fields and Futures. I know as a, back when I was coaching Powell, they were instrumental in helping us try to make sure that we had enough fields for our kids to use. And Tim and Liz McLaughlin do a fantastic job with that, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Okay. Is there any other items, Councilman Greenwell? You thought you might have something that was going to come? Okay.
May I bring up something?
Absolutely.
I'm kind of like Councilman Greenwell. I figured out what I wanted to talk about after the fact. I wanted to bring up L. And the reason I wanted to bring up L is that we have public art for the USA Softball Hall of Fame complex for the request for qualifications to be advertised. So I just wanted to make mention that we need some art, and we are really hoping that it comes from the community, or at least from the city of Oklahoma City, and a local artist, should I say, that responds and that we can have some beautiful work in this USA Softball Hall of Fame. And I just want to make mention to keep in mind, this art will be seen by people from all across the world that come to this USA complex every single summer because I can't get down grand because of that full week of traffic that's in the community. But that's a great thing to have when you're showing off a USA complex such as this. So I just wanted to make mention of that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other items? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt a consent docket?
I'll move the consent docket.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Councilwoman Nice passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to page 19, the concurrence docket, where we have one item today, concurrence with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust in approving economic development agreement with Wheeler Community Foundation. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yes. Brent Bryant, our finance director, is here for a presentation on this item.
Good morning again. Brent Bryant, Finance Director. I wanted to give you just kind of a history of Tiff District Number 12, which is the Western Gateway Tiff District. It was created in September of 2017. It's a pure ad valorem tax Tiff. It's a pure ad valorem tax Tiff. There's no sales tax associated with it. It has a project plan budget of $120 million. It was designed to promote a mixed-use development of the, and its increment for 2019 is right at $13,000. The Tiff budget of $120 million included $60 million for infrastructure, $20 million for an elementary school, and $40 million for a middle or high school-type facility. The way the Tiff funds are allocated, 75% of the increment that's generated goes towards infrastructure reimbursement, then 25% of it goes towards the elementary school until it reaches a cumulative amount of $20 million. Upon reaching the $20 million, 100% of the revenues will go towards repaying all of the infrastructure costs, and upon that time, then the balance of it, the 100%, will be earmarked for the middle or high school project. The Western Gateway Elementary School is planned to be a dual-immersion school located at 1300 Southwest 15th. It's in the southwest quadrant of the project planned area for the, for Tiff District Number 12. The Oklahoma City School, Oklahoma City Public Schools has been working with the foundation, the Gateway Foundation, for the application. They approved it on August 12th, and they're still finalizing their terms for the charter school. This agreement that before you today was with the Economic Development Trust and the foundation, the Wheeler Community Foundation, it sets out how the infrastructure will be reimbursed as they create, a, gives them access to the $20 million with the increment that's generated. The trust is not issuing any debt associated with this. We're simply a conduit, the way this Tiff is structured. But I do want to point out, they have not finalized their agreement with Oklahoma City Public School System. Section 31F of the Economic Development Agreement gives them a year to bring that executed contract to us. If they don't bring a contract to us within a year, then the Economic Development Trust can terminate without consequence. Process to date, the Economic Development Agreement was approved by...
Brent, on that...
Yes, sir.
...that agreement, our understanding is that, that the school board and the developer have worked together on that, and they're just waiting on the school board coming out with their standard agreement that they're going to apply to all charter...
Yes, sir, that's correct.
We don't expect a delay on that.
I'm not expecting any, any, yes. The process, the Economic Development Agreement was approved in November, and then the next will be, as a process, in order for them to qualify for the reimbursement, there'll be a receipt of the charter school contract with OK CPS, and then they'll have an annual certification, where they'll submit invoices to us documenting what they've actually spent. That's similar to the Economic Development Agreement we have in place for the infrastructure that relates to the housing and commercial part of the Wheeler Tiff District. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
We rarely linger on the concurrence docket. It usually flies by, so it's probably worth noting that the concurrence docket is actually a place where we merely concur with the actions of others, and we actually, the votes we take here do not actually have a legal consequence. They are, they are essentially just concurring, acknowledging that that happened. I suppose if we took a vote against an item ever on the concurrence docket, that sends some kind of message, but it is very different from the rest of our docket, in that it does not actually matter whether we approve it or not. Any comments or questions for Brent on this item? Okay. Thank you, Brent. Well, we have the one item. Is there a motion?
Got a second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item nine, items requiring separate votes. These are item A, we'll begin with, ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval at the Planning Commission. Item 9A1 is at 6401 North Sooner Road, going from AA to C3. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I do know the applicant is present. Has anyone signed up to speak? All right. With that, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Hold on, I want some more going on. Hold on, hold on, people.
Councilman Cooper, you're...
Yeah.
Passes unanimously.
Consent docket.
We are long past the consent docket. Moving on to item 9A2, this is at 2105 Southwest 55th Street, going from C3 to R4. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, so my understanding is that the applicant is actually interested in sending this back to Planning Commission to continue working on it. I believe they're going to actually try to do a spud, so I guess I'm motioning to refer to Planning Commission.
Sounds good. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A3, 1104 through 1106, Southeast 51st Street, going from C3 to I1. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Francis, has anyone signed up to speak? This item falls in line with existing zoning in the area. It was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. Unless anyone has any questions, I would move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A4 is at 220 Northwest 95th Street, going from R1 to I1. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, Ms. Francis. All right. With that, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A5 at 10900 North County Line Road, going from PUD 954 to PUD 1737. Councilman Stone, cipher.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. I'm not aware of any protests here today. If no one has any questions, I'd move the item.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A6, 10020 West Wilshire Boulevard, going from R1 and SPUD 470 to SPUD 1148. Councilman Griner, and we do have someone available for questions, probably the applicant.
This is to allow a wholesale tree nursery on Wilshire Boulevard. It got unanimous approval from Planning Commission, and I don't think there's been any protest, so with that, I move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Councilman Cooper is back. Do you have? There we go. Passes unanimously. 9A7, 526 Southeast 12th Street, going from R1 to SPUD 1159. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, has anyone signed up to speak for this, Ms. Francis? All right. With that, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. I'm sorry?
You can tell us what, what, you say something about yourselves when you start planning, what we're going to pass it.
I say the item, and I read the entire item, and you have an agenda that you can follow along with. Moving on, sir, you sign up to speak. That's how you speak. I answered your question. We're moving on. 9A8, 11, I'm sorry, 1516 North MacArthur Boulevard, going from R1 to SPUD 1161. Councilman McAtee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is present.
Okay. This is to allow auto sales on MacArthur. It was unanimously passed by the Planning Commission. Has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
Nobody has signed up the applicant here to answer questions. Unless there are some questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9B, ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, closing a utility easement extending south from Southwest 11th Street west of South Mustang Road. Councilman McAtee.
Yes, this is an ordinance that was also approved by the Planning Commission without any protest. Is the applicant present? Not seeing him, but unless there's some questions, I move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're at 9C. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, closing portions of street right-of-way east of North Santa Fe Avenue and south of Northwest 122nd. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, ma'am. Has anyone signed to speak? All right.
I believe someone's here to answer questions.
Okay, we have someone here to answer questions. Are there any questions? All right. With that, I move for approval.
Oh, oh.
Got a, is there a second? Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we're at 9D, one and two. This is the third of three meetings on this topic of adding exit to the list of areas not to be obstructed, and there is actually an amendment on today.
Yes, Steve Kreis, Steve had made a presentation on the 19th, I think it was, of November. He had made a presentation on this with the amendment that's been added to this. I wanted him to be able to explain what we're doing with the amendment.
What's on final hearing today is the original amendment to the disorderly conduct ordinance, where we were adding sidewalk to the places you could not obstruct. We have to add another amendment to include right-of-way to those list of areas. That's all the amendment is for today.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, does somebody want to adopt the amendment?
I'd move for the amendment.
Got a motion in a second to amend the proposed ordinance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And that brings us to item D2, which is the ordinance on final hearing, which we could potentially adopt today.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9E, one and two are related. One is the public hearing regarding the Adventure District Business Improvement District. Two is the resolution adopting and confirming the assessment role. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion found at 9E1 regarding the Adventure District Business Improvement District? Come forward, state your name and address, and you, your remarks to three minutes.
Michael Watson, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. I'm for anything, everything that y'all have a relationship to. Let me tell you that right now. I have an ultimate disrespect for anybody who tries to rob the citizens of monies that rightfully belong to them to specialized groups and interests that don't involve everybody else. So in that regard, heck no to anything that y'all got to do without approval today. First of all, I want y'all to know here that this is a racial discrimination. Y'all taking all the money, keeping it downtown from people who are on the east side who needs thing, and you got people so-called on our side that's preventing us from having our access to monies that are geared toward bettering our own interest, instead, interest of the few, the wealthy, and not proud Marines. I'll enter at this, because I'm going to have some more fun from here on out. Have a good day.
All right, there is an Alyssa Bryant who signed up to support 9E.
I'll speak for herself. How about that?
Okay. And also Tiffany. Do you, are you okay, or, okay? All right, only if needed, she wrote. All right. So we are still on the public hearing. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we can move on to item 9E2, the resolution adopting and confirming an assessment role, year 2020, for the Adventure District Business, whatever, you know what it is. Moving on, et cetera. Is there a motion?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9F is an ordinance on final hearing, adopting and setting the assessment role, year 2020, for the Adventure District Business Improvement District, obviously related to the previous items. This is the ordinance, however, is there a motion?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9G, one and two are related to each other, and I believe, is there something I need to say special?
So all we need to do is just point out that's the second public hearing.
Okay. This is the, okay. So this is the second public hearing regarding ordinance number 25081, approving and adopting the amended and restated Northeast Renaissance Redevelopment Project Plan. Is there anyone here?
Joanna McSpadden is our Economic Development Manager, and she was going to just give us an update on some changes within the project.
The plan. I just wanted to make a quick note to inform you of a correction that we made. Good morning, I'm Joanna McSpadden with the Economic Development Program. Section 9A of the plan, we made a correction. In your original version, it referenced increment number nine, and if you remember, we split increment nine into three separate increments, and section 9A was actually intended to be the identification and definition of increment District C. And so we've made that correction in the version that you have, and we just wanted to note that here, and I'd be happy to answer questions if you've got them.
Thanks.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none. We're at 9G2, the ordinance number 26310, on final hearing with emergency regarding the Northeast Renaissance Redevelopment Project Plan.
Oh, yeah, well, I want to speak on it. No, it's, oh.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We can return to the public hearing briefly. If you'd state your name and address.
Thank you. Again, Michael Watson, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Oh, no. This Northeast Renaissance District, we're still on that part, right? Northeast Renaissance?
Yes.
I am absolutely 100% opposed to it. Once again, it's all designed to help out this innovation district. You're adding more monies into this development for the purpose of making sure that developers from the outside can come into my black community, and therein to promote their business and ventures and interests. Now then, this is something I spoke about, I told y'all about last, a couple of weeks ago, that I do not approve, because you excluded my African-American community, and there will be a lawsuit filed on anybody who secretly and underhandedly intends to belittle or disregard my right as a citizen here in the Western Hemisphere of America. Now, number one, I am a political activist, and I will speak out on injustices no matter where they may arise. Again, Katie, Kathy O'Connor, who was over the economic development portion of this extensive increase in this economic development on Northeast Side, is for the purpose, once again, of bringing her buddies in, and as she clearly stated a couple of weeks ago, that we will get to own certain parts of all the developments. Now, how is this private entity owned by Larry Nichols, by the way, everybody? How is this private interest itself going to have a direct involvement in the Northeast Renaissance of Oklahoma City, y'all? We're not going to tolerate this. We got one political activist, one community activist, one black man on the Northeast Side that's going to speak out in behalf of his people and don't care who like it or not. Isn't that something? Isn't that interesting? Don't care who's listening behind me, the black faces don't have a problem with me? Oh, well, get your coffee and drink, because I've had mine already. Now then, I'm not having an energy drink to it. You can see I'm very active. Is that right? Now then, it's not going to be anybody that's going to come into my black community. It's starting now. Your Innovation District ain't going to work, your Northeast Renaissance District ain't going to work, and those black people you got working in our district over there, it's not going to work. Now then, I'll leave. Thank you very much, because I'll be back.
I want to continue to reiterate the communication even from the last meeting, since we have to repeat it again and again and again for you. First of all, the public improvements and developments have been increased with this Tiff, and that is so we can have public improvements and development in our community. Secondly, I want to continue to reiterate the fact that we have already had the discussion. We did it during our MAPS presentations. Innovation District has their own Tiff. They don't need this Tiff. They have their own, and that is something we have already discussed, and we have already discussed even the benefits of how the Innovation District needs to also ensure that they are connecting and communicating with the community. So none of this has not been said publicly about how it needs to be communicated to the community. So again, I want to reiterate, when it comes to this Tiff nine, as we look at the improvement and why it was increased, as far as the money, it is again for public improvement to the area of where this Tiff has been designated for the increment to be used for the project areas. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. You already spoke on this item. You only get one shot at it. All right, we are now on 9G2, ordinance number 26310, on final hearing with emergency. Does that mean, by the way, do we actually want to adopt emergency on this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll move the, which will be a separate vote. So we move the item, and we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Move the emergency.
Got a motion and a second on the emergency. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. 9H1, this is the public hearing regarding the joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving allocations outlined in item 9H2, which is 4.4 million from increment district B. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing regarding item 9H1? Please come forward, state your name and address, and keep your remarks to less than three minutes.
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Everybody, heck no. I'm not accepting anything, once again, that's prematurely a white supremacist move. You heard me. You're not gonna hear it like this from anybody but me because I don't want to have the heart and determination and will to give God his first recognition. I fear no man, no entity, anyone. Why? Because I don't harm anybody other than with truth. Now then, we, the mayor, the people here of Oklahoma County, Oklahoma City, who have been trampled on, disregarded, pushed to the wayside, not even recognized, again, I fail to hear how we, as African-Americans, are going to give an increase and be improved in our districts. Money so-called allocated for public services and all that, I haven't seen it yet. Are y'all ready for this one? From the first $60 million project that was in this tax and finance, I fail to see where any black face have earned anything of any tough regard from there. Come on now, y'all, contradict me if you can, Miss Nice. I'm gonna give you the opportunity next one. I tell you, you can't, since you want to target me. Are you ready for this one, though? Not only are we not gonna tolerate being excluded as a unique people who started history off, who started the world off, who started recognition off, who started life off, you're not gonna exclude me. Why? Because a lot of people are upset that everything came from me and ends with me. I am that Alpha and Omega, the beginning and end that you speak about in your revelation in your book. Have a good day.
And again, I will leave at this, your ancestors are not happy with your behavior. But at the same time, I do want to say that as we are looking at this allocation, which again, I have to continue to repeat because it's important for us to have correct information and not allow people to spew misinformation to the community to get everybody riled up. We've had enough of that in our community, first and foremost. But I will say, as we're looking at what this entails, unfortunately, you're correct because the TIF has been in existence for a short time period. There has not been increment, that's what I'm saying. But there is money allotted for a black developer, which is a part of this Renaissance and the extra increment, the area that we're talking about. But when it comes to this particular project, we do know we have minority investment in this, and as we're looking at what this project area is, the project area will continue to be for northeast Oklahoma City. So the benefits will be to northeast Oklahoma City when all is said and done because there's a benefit anyway with access to fresh fruits and vegetables for our community and those around this area when you have a community of over 7,000 residents without a grocery option, a full-service grocery option. So therefore, that is when you have these types of resources to use them effectively in a community, to bring access, that's when you use it. So with that, I would move for approval if there are no more comments.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we've got a motion and a second to approve item 9H2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, 9I, this is the public hearing regarding ordinance relating to personnel and retirement systems. This was briefed at the last meeting. This is the second of three meetings for consideration of this ordinance change. This is merely the public hearing today. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under the public hearing for this item 9I? Seeing none, we'll move on to 9J. This is the public hearing regarding the ordinance relating to the zoning and planning code, amending chapter 59, et cetera. This has to do with the Healthy Neighborhoods Overlay District, and this is the second of three meetings. Today is merely the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under 9J, the public hearing for the Healthy Overlay District? Seeing none, we will move on to 9K. These are ordinances to be introduced, set for public hearing on January 7, 2020, and final hearing January 21, and I believe we have a presentation to explain them.
Yes, Eric Winger is going to be making a presentation. I'm not seeing him in the room yet. So if you want to move to the next item, maybe we can come back to that. Oh, here he is. All right, Eric's gonna give us an update on this, just an overview of what we're doing with these changes.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Eric Winger, Public Works Director. We have two ordinance items for your consideration today. Both of these are in our traffic ordinances, so the first one's 32-33. The second one is 32-237. The way the ordinances are currently written is it authorizes the city manager to make emergency changes. What we're asking today is that that be extended to the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. The project that I would tell you that we've done this on before would be like the Boulevard, when we open up and we've got some special signage conditions, or we've got some different things that need to be addressed immediately, but we don't have time to go to the Traffic Commission. We need to go ahead and make those changes and then take them to the Traffic, excuse me, take those to the Traffic Commission later. So this first one would make that change to the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer myself to be able to make those changes. Ran in here so fast. The second item is actually the ability to make changes to time-limited changes, also in the ordinance, which are typically under the purview of the Traffic Commission. Each year when we open up for schools each fall, we find that a lot of the school's own time changes are needing to be changed very quickly, sometimes not in time for us to go to the Traffic Commission. So with your authorization today on 32-237, which is K2, we would also extend that opportunity to the City Engineers, Director of Public Works, to make those changes, reding schools or any other types of time-restricted changes that need to be made. So it's not applying new time restrictions, but changing those time restrictions to different hours, so adjusting for school schedules or other items like that. But with that, I can answer any questions you might have on either item.
Can you give us an example of the 32-33 of what an emergency?
So just this past summer, when the Boulevard had actually opened, we found that there were instances where we needed to add the stop signs at Klein Avenue. Normally, a stop sign requires the Traffic Commission approval. We actually approached the city manager. It's already authorized that the city manager can make that change. Craig approved that, and so that went into effect. This change would allow the Director of Public Works to make the change without having to approach the city manager. So clearly, we're gonna operate under the purview of Public Works and make sure that we're making traffic safe. Other instances could be when we have emergencies for, say, a downed signal poles or different things like that where we need to affect change. Perhaps maybe we even on an emergency need to affect one-way traffic in certain conditions and things like that. But these items are all ratified by the Traffic Commission. It just allows the Director and the department to go ahead and make that change today if necessary, and then ratified at the next available meeting.
Any other comments or questions for Eric?
So this is just an introduction today, so it's an ordinance change. We'll be coming back for a public hearing and then for a final. So this won't be the last time that we have this item today. It's just the introduction.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Would someone like to move for introduction? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and the ordinances at K1 and 2 are introduced for consideration. Okay, moving on to 9L. This is ordinance number 26345 to be introduced and adopted with the emergency. This creates the use tax that follows upon the sales tax that was approved by the voters on December 10.
Yes, this does exactly what you just said, and basically, the state law allows us to set the use tax rate at the same rate as our sales tax rate. This would allow it to go into effect, give us enough time that we give the notice to the Tax Commission so that it goes into effect April 1st at the same time the MAPS 3 use tax does. In the past, really starting back with the city and schools with the MAPS for Kids tax, we have used the use tax to pay for replacement of public safety, police and fire vehicles, particularly vehicles, but also other technical equipment that goes with the vehicles. And we've used this in that way since that time. It's something that's really important to us. We spend probably between $12 to $15 million a year on those items, and so that's something that we'll come back to you with. The use tax does generate more than what we need specifically just for public safety fleets, so we'll be talking with all the council members about that before we come back with a resolution of intent. All this will do at this point is just set an order, I mean, get us moving forward to get the tax in place. We will come back in the next few meetings to the council after meeting with you all to discuss a resolution of intent.
So this does not today allocate, though you referenced how it's been used in the past. Today it does not do that.
Correct.
Today merely applies it. And how would you describe to the layperson what the use tax even is?
So use tax, basically, a sales tax is anything that's purchased within the state and used within the city. Use tax is anything that is purchased from outside of the state and used within the city. So online sales falls under that. A lot of times, you get technical equipment or construction equipment that's brought in from outside of the state into the state, and that becomes use tax.
But the majority of this will be used for public safety vehicles? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, right now, we aren't determining that at this point. That's how we've done that in the past. My intent would be to include that as a part of our discussion with resolution of intent, but that will be come back, come back, and we'll have a discussion about that with resolution of intent.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other comments or questions or motions? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then I believe you're looking for an emergency on this?
Yes.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're at 9M1. This is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed, items A through C, and we do have someone who has signed up to speak, so we'll start there. Claire Garrett. And I believe this is in regards to M1C at 1435 Northwest 39th.
Hello, council members and Mayor Holt. My name is Claire Garrett. My sister Lynn Garrett lives at 1439 Northwest 39th Street. That is next door to the property under discussion, which is 1435 Northwest 39th. My sister cannot be here in person today because she is terminally ill at home, and I am here to speak for her. I have been living with her since August as her 24/7 caregiver ever since she got her terminal diagnosis. It has been approximately 10 months since there was a fire at 1439 Northwest 39th Street, but to date, the property owner has done nothing to make any repairs. My sister has long since replaced her damaged siding. She's repaired her roof, and she's repainted her house, which was also damaged as a result of the fire next door. While the front of 1439 is boarded up, the broken side windows and the open back door allow for easy access, and in fact, squatters have been observed by us living inside the burned-out shell of this house, and they've also been observed inhabiting the garage. This puts my sister and me and other neighbors on the street at risk of having another neighborhood fire should squatters make fire this winter to heat these derelict structures that they are living in. The burned-out shell of a house and also the garage are not even safe structures for squatters to inhabit, so those people are at risk too. You should be aware of that. Just half-block west of Classen Boulevard is where this is located, and this section of 39th Street is a very busy, high-visibility corridor. It's traveled by countless cars every day, and this burned-out derelict structure gives Oklahoma City and our neighborhood an ugly black eye, and it hurts the quality of our life, and it diminishes the surrounding property values. After 10 months, it's long overdue for this property to be declared abandoned, dilapidated, and finally demolished. I thank you for the opportunity to share with you my first-person perspective on the clear and present danger that I see every day that this dilapidated property represents to our neighborhood. Please do the right thing today and vote to declare both the house and the garage. The garage is not on your attachment in today's agenda, but the squatters are primarily living in the garage and having fires to keep warm there. And so please declare it today, and then please take all legal steps available to the city to have it finally demolished. I thank you so much for this opportunity to address you today.
Thank you. What of that comment about the garage?
Chad Davidson, Code Enforcement Superintendent. Garage is unsecured at this time. We're gonna get an inspector out in the next day or so to take care of that and bring it before you guys try to get it on the next agenda.
Okay. Can you talk about why it takes, say, 10 months for it to get to this point?
Well, this house in particular has a fire restoration permit, so I think the owners initially intended to fix the home. They received it in June, but hasn't proceeded past this point. Usually, we're just here to answer a call once we get that initial notification through the Action Center.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak under this public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed? Okay, come forward.
2900 Northeast 18th Street. Y'all know what? I feel calm that you got that energy out my system. Ma'am, very eloquent, very interesting and important, sir. If these people have had 10 months to correct such a threat to the overall community and citizens who may pass through there, who may not live in the community, I cannot say pro se what steps you need to take, but I believe if it's the interest of that community, then you should have their community interest at heart. So again, I'm a very compassionate person, and I certainly would be afraid of squatters, not just thinking that they're dangerous and anything, but the fact that they could cause unnecessary fire or what have you in a place like that will bring down property values. So yes, ma'am, great attention brought to us. Thank you.
Okay. Any other people wish to speak under the public hearing? All right, seeing none. I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9M2 declaring that the structures are dilapidated. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Councilman, passes unanimously. All right, item 9N1 and 2 was previously stricken, which brings us to 9O1. This is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for the ones that were struck at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9O2 declaring that the structures are unsecured. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9P1 is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for the one that was stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing?
Yes.
Come forward.
3221 North Youngs. What is that? Is that on northeast side? Let's see what's up with that one. Lord have mercy, I've seen enough. Yeah, okay.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9P2 declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, 9Q1 and 2 was previously stricken at the beginning of the meeting, which brings us to 9R. This is a resolution repealing and replacing prior resolution adopted on September 24, 2019, declaring the need for the adoption of the International Residential Code for one- and two-family dwellings, et cetera. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, Bob Tina, our Development Services Director, give us an update on what we're doing with this resolution.
In September, the council, we asked the council to adopt the 2015 International Residential Code. Subsequent to that, we found that we admitted the local amendments from the state, so this resolution will replace that original resolution and bring us in conformance with the state. I can answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Bob?
What is the resolution?
Got a motion and a second for the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9S is a collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI. Got a motion and a second. Certainly compliment the staff for completing the trifecta now with all of our collective bargaining agreements for the year. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9T, resolution approving revisions to Police Policy 554, use of force, which was previously presented at a meeting. This is the resolution. Does the chief wish to say something?
Yes, so the chief will make a presentation on this, just to give us an update. The council approves the policies that the Police Department follows, and we bring them back periodically for update. Police Department's been reviewing this particular policy in their own internal review, as well as working with Kalia, which is an accrediting agency, and so the chief will give us a presentation on what's being changed.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Wade Gorley, Chief of Police. First off, I'd like to recognize my command staff that's here today. There's a lot that goes into these policies, as well as Executive Officer Josh Minter, that goes into not only the implementation, but the review process in determining how we identify issues with our policies and update them. And then also, too, they're largely responsible for making sure the policies are followed out in the different operations around the Police Department, so I want to give them a lot of credit and appreciation for them being here today as well. So Policy 554, basically, this has been a work in progress for about a little over a year or so. And the thing about all of these policies, the Police Department's constantly reviewing, revising, creating written directives, and the process can be initiated by any number of ways to include a particular incident, an annual review, a change in law. An officer at any level can also submit a request. It's something they see as well. Proposed changes are reviewed by a department committee, provided to employed bargaining units for comment, and reviewed by the Chief of Police for final approval. For many directives, this is the end of the road. However, directors related to policy issues, and those, the Chief of Police may submit the proposed changes to City Council for its approval. This is under City Ordinance 43-4. Going to the next slide. So the Supreme Court established the foundation for assessing police force in Tennessee versus Garner and Graham versus Connor. The subject fell somewhat dormant for a period of time, but recently, and within the last 10 years or so, there's been several court decisions that have created case law that developed, and officers are required developed, and officers are required to consider more and more factors when determining when to use force and how much or what type of force is used. So this identified a need for us to update the policy itself and account, again, for the recent force case law, and improve the organization of the policy, too. There were some things that were in there that were more procedural, and then also, you know, we were clearing up some definitions as well. Although our current policy is in compliance with constitutional law, it does not fully address all of the recent case law developments. So the adoption of this resolution would bring our use-of-force policy up to date with current case law, and thereby ensuring maximum constitutional protection to the residents of Oklahoma City and limiting the potential for municipal liability. We collaborated with the Municipal Counselor's Office on the development of this. We also showed it to the District Attorney, who had no objections. And also, in our recent accreditation, we had an accreditation process that we went through previously, and this was identified as an issue. We were already working on it, so they passed us on it. It was the same thing this year when we did our most recent accreditation. They passed us on our accreditation. The only issue was this particular policy, and we showed them the version that you have, and they passed us based on the version that we're working on getting approval on. So it's been a project, again, it's been over a year in the making, planning and research, Policy Review Committee, Municipal Counselor's Office, they've done a lot of work on this. Part of the process, too, includes submitting it to the different bargaining agents that the police department deals with, which includes AFSMI and the FOP. We had some back and forth. We sat down and met to discuss these and had some minor edits between those, but then the final draft that you see now was approved by the Municipal Counselor's Office. Our current policy provides that officers can only use objectively reasonable force, but it didn't explain what that means. So in the new version, we further clarified that and talked about the reasonableness of a particular use of force and how it will be judged from the perspective of a reasonable officer on the scene. The reasonableness of the force will not be judged with the benefit of hindsight, and any information learned after the application of force is also irrelevant to determining the reasonableness of the force used at the time. The new version also incorporates the Graham factors and additional factors that have developed in case law, and some of those factors are going to be on the next slide. So the factors that weigh on the reasonableness include whether a person is suspected of a crime, what's the nature of the contact an officer's having with a person, is the officer investigating a crime, are they trying to detain? Is it an arrest? Are they engaging in a community caretaking function, you know, like a welfare check, a mental health call, something of that nature? What brought them into this situation? And then in the next bullet point, the severity of the crime or the problem at issue. How severe is it? Does it involve a misdemeanor or a felony? Is it a violent crime or a nonviolent crime? The next one, whether or not the person poses an imminent threat to safety of officers or others. Is this person posing a threat or endangering officers or others that they are encountering? Does the threat exist at the moment? And then in bullet four, whether a person is resisting arrest or attempting to evade arrest by flight. That's pretty much self-explanatory there. Then in bullet five, is there a medical or mental condition that might be impairing the person or that requires a different approach? These factors are not exclusive, and officers shall ultimately consider the totality of So, on requirement to intervene, the Tenth Circuit has subjected officers to civil liability for failing to intervene when they witness another officer using excessive force, and they have a realistic and safe opportunity to stop the officer. State law also makes it a misdemeanor crime for an officer who witnesses another officer using excessive force to not report it to their supervisor. Even though we were held accountable to these standards, the previous policy didn't have this verbiage in there, so we added that to be included in this current update that you have. And just to go towards the training, officers are constantly receiving use-of-force training. We do that throughout the year. Our rookie officers that come on get immersed in that, and then we do it each year for all of the veteran officers on the department as well. We're always reviewing our use-of-force policy. It includes hands-on tactical training, firearm simulator training, firearms training and qualifications that we do out at our range, de-escalation training, as well as dealing with the mentally ill. These are things we do every year. So when you're investigating use of force, it also includes de-escalation and the use of de-escalation tactics, determining whether an officer's conduct complied with the department directions and directives, and these investigations are going to be continued. We're not going to stop doing those. Procedure 150 regulates use-of-force investigations and says that an investigation will be conducted in every use-of-force incident when an employee, sworn or non-s sworn, resorts to the use of any degree of physical force, including the use of lethal weapons or less-lethal devices. Also, one thing that's pretty unique to our department, and this was brought up by the recent assessors that came and reviewed us, is that we also evaluate de-escalation. We do so separately than the use of force, but it's evaluated in every force incident. So we're looking at, did the officer's attempt, was it appropriate to use de-escalation tactics in that? And that's something that's very unique to our department. And so with that, that concludes the presentation, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments for the chief?
Move the resolution.
Okay. Got a motion in a second to adopt the resolution found at 9T. All right, we have a citizen who signed up to speak, so we'll handle that now. Michael Washington.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Very gallant of you, chief. I, for one, cannot say, for the most part, whether he's sincere or not, and I'm not questioning this man's integrity because I don't know him, but for a couple of times we've met, he was pretty much cordial. So in that light, then, it is very important that these measures be adopted by this horseshoe presenters here. Why? Because as we know, throughout the Western Hemisphere, here in the United States, snakes of America, excuse me again, I like to be sincere with mine, we know that African-Americans have been forcefully, deliberately, and flagrantly targeted for police brutality, for merely just having a cigarette on the street corner and selling cigarettes maybe, to being found in jailhouses, just strung up, hung, but yet they hung themselves from a, oh, come on, let's not get that far with it. But anyhow, these measures, as far as Oklahoma City is concerned, I think is very important because the use of force, as this gentleman spoke about, is very interesting here in Oklahoma. I very much myself seen, and matter of fact, been a victim of one of those excessive uses of forces. Again, I'm still here, though, because I'm a tough guy. As long as they don't shoot a gun, I'm pretty good. But anyhow, I am one of those people, again, chief, that I believe these policies need to be improved, given credence to a change, as you spoke about, and it's gallant on your part to say that you are respecting the Supreme Court decisions in that regard. I myself am a follower of law, and I enjoy being a part of that. Why? Because law is important in all our lives, every time we wake up, go to bed, isn't it? And then we also have officers who, again, take their job seriously. Again, we may have pockets of them that seriously do not. Let's just keep that real. How do we handle those that don't want to do that? And how do we continue to cover for those who break the law? Simply because they obviously didn't want to feed their families because they wouldn't be getting out, violating the civil rights of the people that's supposed to be protected in the first place. I believe, in closing, then, that I should be consulted and asked about what I feel is going on on the northeast side in that regard. Why? Because being a political activist, activist, I mean, even in my sleep, I see things, once again, with three or four police cars running up on a pedestrian, or maybe drive someone driving for maybe a taillight or, let me just stop you, let me put handcuffs on you while I'm talking to you. That part has been brought about in here today. So I hope that all this other stuff will be included in on this change of uses of force, because sometime, in some cases, citizens on our end, pedestrians on our end, are accosted by officers simply, I guess, for the fact, let them know, hey, I'm here, let me keep my eye on you. With that, again, chief, thank you, oh, let me say this here, and the definition of resistance and all that, is it a resistance when someone asks them, why are you being bothered?
Mr. Washington, you're over three minutes. I'm going to have to cut you off there. Thank you very much. All right, we have a motion in a second on the table.
Mayor, if I could just make a comment real quick?
Sure.
And then I had a question.
I've had, and the last week, I've had two occasions where, unfortunately, and it wasn't my fault, so I wasn't going to jail, but had interactions with our police force. And chief, I just want to say again, thank you, and to your staff, to all the officers that we have out there. Both cases, they were dealing with stuff that I can tell you, I certainly don't want to deal with, I don't think anyone up here wants to deal with, but their courtesy and professionalism in dealing with the things the rest of us don't want to have to deal with, I commend all of you, and thank you very much.
I know we have a motion on the floor, but I didn't get to ask my question before we got there. To chief, I know previously we had talked about in our conversations the training of explicit and implicit bias in this process as well, and I know it wasn't on this presentation, but, and you also advised me that you would add it to annual, or I don't know, I guess that's my question, will this be annual and will this be also mandatory for our officers, or is this just optional for the officers to take that yearly or annually?
What we had discussed is we have a separate policy that addresses conduct related to bias. Actually, we have two, Policy 222 and Policy 225. And what we try to do in everything that we do is make that part of who we are. We start that very early in the academy, that that's not how we make decisions as police officers. We make decisions based on the law and the circumstances in front of us. And so what we had talked about, because this is a use-of-force policy, and that's what we discuss in that, and the training is directly related to the use of force, is that we have a system that allows us to push out training electronically yearly, and I kind of compared it to the sexual harassment training that the city does. They push that out electronically annually. And so we've come up with a method that we can do that with our bias training and make that an annual training like we do, sexual harassment and other things that the city does. And so that's what we're working on now. Matter of fact, my Director of Training is here, and he's working on putting that training together based off some training that we did, I think we did it about two years ago, if I remember, and we now own the rights to that, and so we're going to put that out on an annual basis, and there'll be a test at the end to ensure that the officers are understanding what they're getting in that training.
So I guess my question still remains, is this going to be mandatory or optional?
Oh, I'm sorry. It is mandatory. When we push it out over that electronic medium, we can see who's viewed the training. They have a certain timeframe there, and we can put out a list and see who has viewed it and has it, and there'll be a timeframe that they have to do that. It's like we do with all of our training, that we push out that way. It's mandatory that the officers all view it and take the test and sign off on it.
Thank you.
I would say, too, I just really appreciate Chief Gorley, his leadership, and the command staff, and just their commitment to constantly looking at what we're doing and how we're doing it. They do go in and review every single use of force and have very broad definition there, and take a look at that to see if we need to make changes in procedures or in policies, and I really appreciate their commitment to this.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say thank you to Councilperson Nice for, when we met with you, you know, raising some of these concerns that we have about implicit and explicit bias, and I want to say thank you for working with the two of us to address those concerns and making sure that our police force is following best practices and, you know, doing the best job they can out there to serve and protect. So thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure.
And if I did say thank you, thank you.
You did.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments? We have a motion in a second. Seeing no further discussion, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we're at 9U1. I don't believe we need the executive session. This is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal Jonathan Wechter. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9V1, don't believe we need executive session. This is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority authorizing the firm of Collins, Zorn, and Wagner, PC, to represent municipal employee Oklahoma City Police Officer John Ricketts in the case of Roth v. Ricketts.
Move the joint resolution.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll handle this at the end, but we have item 9W to enter into executive session on the advice of the Municipal Counselor to receive confidential communications from the attorneys regarding Deer Creek Water Corp. versus City of OKC.
Move that we enter into executive session as to this item.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and as I said, we'll handle that executive session at the conclusion of our other business. And finally, 9X1, claims recommended for denial. Don't believe we need executive session. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any of these claims? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to deny the claims. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now, we'll go ahead and handle an extra item that probably would have been under items to be voted on individually. This was not on the original agenda, but was properly noticed after the fact. These are extra items one and two. Two weeks ago, petitions were submitted to, or a petition, I should say, was submitted to the City of Oklahoma City to hold an election for a one-eighth of a cent sales tax dedicated to parks, and the clerk has certified that the sufficient signatures were submitted, and there was no protest. And so the resolution in extra item one is to authorize the mayor, me, to issue a proclamation calling a special election to be held within the city on Tuesday, March 3, 2020. I see advocate for this proposal, former Councilman White here, do you wish to speak?
Chief, is there any question?
Okay. Okay. Is there any comment, question, or motions? Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And extra item two is a resolution relating to the special election called for March 3, 2020, to submit the ordinance proposed by Initiative Petition Number 42, et cetera. Is there a motion in a second for that? Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Could I just like to go?
Well, of course. Come on.
First of all, I want to, I'm Pete White, 13733 Southeast 134th, Oklahoma City, Ward 4. I appreciate the action today, and mayor, I especially appreciate your cooperation in getting this set as quickly as we did. We had some choices about where to go, and all of them, none of them were really good, but this is the best of that group, and I appreciate all your help in doing it. I really look forward to helping with, having the city help as much as legally possible to help us, because I think if you look at what we're asking to do, you'll find it to be very transformative in terms of our park operation. It's a crying need in parks to have a fixed source of revenue for programming, operations, maintenance, and this would answer that question. And aside, I was the first customer of the fire station that was built on my, in my ward while I was Councilman, the Far One South. My favorite place in the world burned down Friday night about 3 o'clock is my greenhouse in the, that fire. I was their first response, I was the first respondent for them, so I appreciate very much for passing out accolades to the police department and the fire department was, couldn't have been nicer about watching me cry as my favorite place in the world burned to the ground, so I appreciate it very much. Good to see all of you. It is nice to watch you, how much fun you guys have. I just had forgotten, in two years, I just totally forgot how much fun it was to be a Councilman. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, moving on to 10A1, claim recommended for approval. Don't believe we need executive session. Is there a motion? Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now we're at 11, items from council. We'll handle the listed items before we go around the horseshoe. Item 11A1 was stricken at the beginning of the meeting, which leaves 11A2 and 11B that I believe are related to each other, and I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Hammond to handle that.
And I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager McDermid to discuss the particularities of how we, what we needed to do to kind of tweak what we originally proposed.
Yes, thank you. Mayor and Council, Aubrey McDermid, Assistant City Manager. Just as a refresher about this ordinance amendment that was proposed, this ordinance amendment was requested by Councilwoman Hammond to simplify the process for street entertainers in Oklahoma City, which required licenses and also... in Oklahoma City, which required licenses and also a permit if they located on the Bricktown Canal. So the original proposal that we reviewed the last two meetings, had the, the requirements that originally were developed for the Bricktown Canal brought under the licensing requirements for the general city permit. All other street entertainers could exist in Oklahoma City without a license, and we felt like since the Bricktown Canal area had those very specific standards, and I think originally, once upon a time, were related to concerns about people gathering in narrow walkways along the canal and safety issues, we decided to bring those into the ordinance. But upon further review and advice from our legal staff, we, we are proposing a different ordinance because the safety concerns that we originally had for the Bricktown Canal are actually already covered within the municipal code. And the police department could enforce any type of gathering in any public space that causes a safety issue, so there was a separate higher standard for the Bricktown Canal that didn't really, wasn't really necessary to create that extra burden on people who wanted to locate it upon the Bricktown Canal. So today, what you're seeing on the agenda is those two sections of the municipal code that are amended, and the first item that was stricken was the original item that carried those requirements for the licensing from Bricktown Canal area forward. The second item is the item that deletes the permit requirement along the Bricktown Canal. And then, item B is a replacement that we're proposing today for making licenses for street entertainers not required citywide, so it makes these standards consistent across the board. Do you have any questions related to that?
I'm confused on Bricktown. Will there still be requirements?
No. No, it would just, it would be permitted freely across the city anywhere, we're removing the requirements, special requirements for Bricktown to get a license. Because this, I think the safety concerns for Bricktown are already addressed in the code, so it was redundant.
How are they addressed in the code?
There are sections in the municipal code that talk about public gatherings and spaces and not impeding sidewalks or entrances to places, and that was really kind of the intent, I think, of the Bricktown restrictions.
Does the Bricktown tenants, people that own property there, support this ordinance?
When, yeah, I coordinated with the Downtown Oklahoma City, Inc., to work with the property owners, and when they talked to them, they were surprised that this ordinance even existed in the first place, and they would like to see street entertainers along the Bricktown Canal and increased activity along the canal, and they didn't, they were not concerned.
Thank you.
So if, if you all agree with this approach that was recommended, then the action that would need to be taken today so that both of these ordinances could move forward at the same time as we would ask that council approves both with emergencies, you'd have to amend the ordinances to include an emergency for both items A2 and B.
Okay. So, I guess I will make a motion to amend, say that again.
To, to adopt the ordinance proposed at 11A2?
Mayor, the first motion should be an amendment to provide for an emergency in A2.
Okay.
Okay.
So I will motion to provide for an emergency in item A2.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussions, seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously.
Now the motion is to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Okay, I will motion to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion, seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously.
Now you have to vote on the emergency.
That's what I thought.
I will motion for the emergency.
On 11A2. Is there a second? Got a motion in a second, any further discussion, seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously.
Same process.
For the, for B, right? Okay, so I will vote to amend, or I motion to amend item B to have an emergency.
Okay. Got a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion, seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously.
I will motion to adopt B as amended.
Okay. Got a motion in a second, any further discussion, seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously.
And I will move for A, an emergency on item B.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion, seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously.
We did it, thank you.
All right, good job. 11C, this is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on January 17th, final hearing on January 21st, relating to vehicles for hire and advertising on such vehicles. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yeah, so I'll, I'm going to pass it over to Amanda Carpenter to kind of discuss the details, but a company named Shuffle had approached me, this was quite a while ago, they're interested in operating their vehicles for hire in Oklahoma City, they've previously been on the campus at Norman, and they provide sort of a short distance transportation option, particularly in kind of entertainment event situations. And they then approached staff, so they, they approached us about changing, or getting them essentially street legal, and then they also approached us about the potential for advertisements on their vehicles, and so, there is some particular legal considerations in the codes that I'll have Amanda discuss, because I don't know the judge.
Sure, the current code provides for motor vehicles for hire to include low-speed vehicles like Shuffle, as well as taxis, and so, the code set prohibits any advertising except for the company, advertising of the company, and in particular locations. So this amendment would specifically allow for advertising on all motor vehicles for hire, taxis and low-speed vehicles like Shuffle. If you remember, Uber and Lyft are not included in our motor vehicle for hire due to the legislative preemption. It would allow advertising in the rear trunk lid or panel, it would allow advertising on the rear bumper, on door panels with vinyl lettering or vinyl wrap, and on the rooftop. The advertiser, advertising cannot prohibit or inhibit the ability of the motor vehicle for hire insignia or logo to be seen, which is a requirement in our current code, as well as the color requirement that's in 56-45. Additionally, all the structural components of the advertising will be required to be inspected by our vehicle for hire inspector, who is with the police department. That will be, that inspection will be done on an annual basis, and they will be inspecting for any safety concerns. The design and layout of any advertising will also be submitted by email or in person to that vehicle for hire inspector, who will be confirming the location of all advertising in order to determine that it's in an approved location. They also can request a inspection if necessary, if they have any questions about that advertising. We do have a representative from Shuffle here, if there's any specific questions for that company, but otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So currently, the prohibition for putting advertisements on your car is just for vehicles for hire? Like, can I put an advertisement on my car?
So right now, we don't have any prohibition against individuals putting advertising on their vehicle. The prohibition that we have is on motor vehicles for hire, taxis and low-speed vehicles, from advertising on their vehicle, anything other than their own company.
Like, why is that there? It doesn't make much sense. That's why we're getting rid of it, Jay.
It's been there for a while, but we don't believe it's necessary any longer.
Okay.
I have a motion to introduce.
Got a motion in a second, this is to introduce the ordinance, any further discussion? Although I think Councilman Griner pretty much made the most devastating debate possible. Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously, will be set for public hearing on January 7th and final hearing on January 21st. All right, 11D, this is an ordinance to be referred to the Planning Commission for its consideration, so to be clear, it would potentially still come back and still have the three-meeting cycle ahead of it that any ordinance change requires under the Ryan Resolution. This is related to zoning and planning code, et cetera, relating to written notice of public hearings for rezoning applications, Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, and I know we have with municipal councillor's office, Susan Randall, but the reason I wanted to bring this to our attention is the fact that when we have those special planned unit developments and planned unit developments, when the notice is sent to the residents that are around that area, there's not a type of use that's defined to the resident, and therefore, in my opinion, because of the calls and concerns we get, people are questioning and are just unaware of what it is. So with this, we're asking for that use, if it is specified, that it is put into our notice when we send it out to the residents, so Ms. Randall can speak more to that.
Susan Randall with the City Attorney's Office. And that is correct, what this will do is just require that our written notices that we mail to property owners within 300 feet of a rezoning change, which would include all of our PUDs and SPUDs, it would require us to put in the use units allowed in that zoning. So for example, if you're going from R1 to O2, we would list all of the uses that are allowed, all the use units that are allowed in O2. That provides citizens with a little bit more notice of what other uses can also be used in that zoning district, and then if they have a specific use that they proposed, we would also include that. And we're asking this just to be referred back to the Planning Commission and go through these processes.
So this would kind of address, I remember issues like here where people have a SPOD or a POD, and they use base zoning of, let's pretend, a hospital, and then they, one of the uses they intend to do is a firing range, and it's actually not going to be a hospital law, but this would address that, people would get better notice of what is really intended.
Yes, this would address that, and like, for example, in the O2 use, there may be 23 different other uses that can be allowed in that zoning district. And so, in our notice, we'll also put a link to the code where they can look up and look at the definition of exactly what types of uses those would be, and so I think it will provide better notice.
And I may add again, for those residents who are unfamiliar with our, our city process and just get a notice in the mail, at least they know in reference what is about to happen in their community, on their block, in their neighborhood, instead of just a broad description, and then they either have to come down here and ask, or call us and ask, but they can still ask those questions, but at least they'll at least have an idea of what they're, they can look forward to support or to oppose in their community.
Okay. All right, do you want to, I guess, make a motion to refer it to the Planning Commission?
Yes, we'd like to make a motion to refer this to our Planning Commission.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion, seeing none, cast your votes. Councilwoman Hammond, there we go, passes unanimously. Okay, item 11E is a resolution amending sections 105, 401, and 1203 of the City of Oklahoma City Personnel Policies, as amended and adopted on July 18th, 2017, to include specific reference to discrimination based upon gender identity and/or gender expression, and directing the city manager to disseminate said amendments. Councilman Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to invite municipal councillor up here to describe where we are currently with these employment protections and what this would, what this resolution would do, what it would, please.
Good morning, Paula Kelly with Municipal Councillor's Office. Where we are currently with the city's personnel policies is that we have included the Title VII protected classes, so race, age, national origin, and then we also have sex. Along with sex, we have a parenthetical out beside that that says to include sexual orientation, that we amended the personnel policies back in 2012 to add. The reason we added that was again, a request of a former councilman, Shadid, the enforcement provisions that we have within the city right now, and at that time, did include sexual orientation and all derivatives under sex according to U.S. Supreme Court case Price Waterhouse v. Hopkins. This provision, if we amended the personnel policies to include gender identity and gender expression, would accomplish the same thing that was accomplished in 2012 when we added sexual orientation, but extending those Title VII protections to those individuals that fall within the categories of gender identity and gender expression.
And am I correct in understanding that that would put us at the same language, for instance, as Tulsa?
Yes, exactly, the cities of Norman and Tulsa, and a couple of cities in Texas, Fort Worth and Austin, they have amended their personnel policies to include gender identity and gender expression as well.
Thank you. And I believe we have some citizens to be heard who might have signed up to speak.
Certainly, yes, would you like to go there now?
Yes, I would, thank you so much.
Okay, Alyssa Bryant.
I am here tonight as a member of the Board of Directors of Freedom of Oklahoma, Freedom Oklahoma. I'm also a lawyer, working with indigent victims of domestic violence, I'm also a parent of four children, I have a lawyer, a teacher, a preacher, and a social worker, so that's either the beginning of a very strange joke, people walking into a bar, or also the best thing I've done in this lifetime. I also happen to be transgender. We are asking tonight for the same opportunity as anyone else to compete for the dignity and the purpose which comes with the job. We want the same freedoms as anyone else to provide for the people we love, to contribute, even to pay taxes, to work hard to build our lives. When I first came out in Oklahoma about a decade ago, I thought I couldn't do it here. I thought, I have to go to the coast, I cannot be a transgender lawyer in Oklahoma, it just won't work. But I was wrong, because Oklahomans are fundamentally fair and decent, and they want us to all have the same opportunities to just build a life and to support our families. Most Oklahomans would probably be surprised to learn that we can be fired merely for being transgender. So I thank you here today for your consideration, and also for your leadership in sending a message to employers and to the prospective employers that would come to this city, that Oklahoma City is a fair, inclusive, and safe places for all Oklahoma Cityans. Thank you.
Thank you. Ally Shin.
Ally Shin, 2641 Northwest 34th, proud resident of Ward 2. You said this morning, Mayor, that we have the best employees, I think, in the world, is that correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, well, that's pretty impressive, and we're really proud of that. I've spoken with many of you about the type of city that we are and the type of city that we want to be, and across the board, all of you have said that we are a city that does not discriminate, that we are employer that believes that everybody ought to have the same opportunity to provide for themselves, their family, and that we should never have to choose between our livelihood and who we are. What we're asking you for today is simply an opportunity to update in writing that we are a city that values every single person who works here, and that we wish to recruit and retain talent that truly reflects the diversity of Oklahoma City. We hope you'll move us in that direction, and we're really excited to be working with you, thank you.
Thank you. When my predecessor put forth the protections for our city employees on the basis of sexual orientation, nearly 10 years ago, I told a story that I just want to briefly share from my childhood, that's very uncomfortable, but, you know, when I was 11, I got a doorbell ring, and it was my best friend, and he said, can you come out to play? And I was like, of course, it had been the usual. And I walked outside, closed the door behind me, and we lived on a corner lot out in Midwest City, and as I turned to that corner, there was a crowd of maybe 24 people standing there, kids a bit older than me, and they were there to watch another kid beat me up. There were stated reasons, and it was because of the way I walked, which was maybe a little bit different, it was because of the way I talked, which was maybe just a little bit different. It was because even though I was good at basketball, I was better at writing, I was better at video games, was better at reading than I was at those sports. And as that crowd gathered to watch me get beat up, something clicked inside of me, and I ran, I jumped the fence, and I jumped from roof to roof to roof, until finally, I landed in a backyard and hid for the rest of the day. All because of the way I walk and the way I talk. And thankfully, inside of me, I always knew I wanted to be a teacher and a writer, and I've had the honor to do both. And it is critical that we send a message to our students that there is a dignity in work, and that they have an opportunity to achieve whatever God-given potential work and that they have an opportunity to achieve whatever God-given potential is inside of them. And right now, in most of the states across this country, it is perfectly legal to fire someone, not because of their work ethic, but because of whom they love or how they identify or how they express their gender. That is not our American values. And we have unfortunately learned that that bullying that I experienced as a child manifests into adulthood into fatal violence. Eighty-two percent of that fatal violence that transgender people experience are in those states with no such laws protecting them. Eighty-two percent. That's from the Human Rights Campaign. Those are statistics that's not made up. This year alone, 22 murders of transgender people. Ninety-one percent of those were black women, and 68% of them were in the South. We are better than this. I know we're better than this. And I also know that a lot of you who've tuned in to Channel 20 or been here or sat next to me have, you know, like to joke about how I talk a lot, and I do, but please know that it takes every bit of courage I have inside of me to speak, not just right now, but all the time, because I remember that doorbell. I remember people telling me they were my friends and they weren't. My students deserve better, K through 12, and so too do our college students, and so too do the people who work currently for the city and who will apply to work for this city, because as Plato taught us over 2,000 years ago, we must have a just and fair city. This is about personal responsibility. This is about the pursuit of happiness. This is about opportunity. And I know that just as those are American values, Oklahoma City shares those values. And with that, I would like to ask my councilpeople to join me in voting in favor of protecting our city employees, no matter how they identify and no matter how they walk and they talk. So I'd like to move approval.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second for the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead, Councilman.
Well, just a question. And James, I agree with your proposition to provide protection for transgenders or either the way they express or they are. But I have a question. What are the rules that we have currently in place as it relates to segregation of areas, whether they're restrooms or dressing rooms? Kenny, do we have such regulations? And how would this come into play with that issue?
This is really a different issue, but...
No, I understand it's a different issue, but could this create a question once this particular resolution is added?
Chris York, Personnel Department. To answer your question, Councilman, we don't have, we don't have an explicit policy specific to restrooms, for example, at this time. And so I would say, though, in implementation of this change, regardless of whether it's approved or not today, most of the, are the protections that we extend to all of our employees cover the members of the LGBTQ community. So, for example, in this case with restrooms, the city does not inquire as to an individual's sex or their identity. So if an individual wanted to use a bathroom that they thought was appropriate for them, the city would not have a problem with that. Now, in the case that there was some disruption to the work environment, then we would need to get involved, and we'd need to assess that situation with the specific set of facts for that particular instance. But in general, there is no, there is no policy that specifically regulates who uses what bathroom.
I understand. And so does this resolution potentially create concerns or unexpected consequences in regards to discrimination if we have to look at a particular situation?
I don't think so, because I think that this is one of the cases where our current practice and procedure exceeds our policy. I don't, I hate to say exceeds, but we offer a comprehensive set of protections to our employees. And so a change like this, in my mind, puts us more in line with a lot of the employers in our area. It puts us in line with how the federal government treats their employees. It puts us in line with the OSHA standard, which I believe the EEOC has adopted. And so, no, I don't expect significant outcome. And plus, I'd also like to highlight that while the bathroom issue is a sensitive issue, in reality and in practicality, it's almost hyperbole. And the reason I say that is because we have maybe, I can think of two cases of this that I can think of in recent history, and I'm talking years, where we had an instance that involved gender identity and a bathroom. And of course, we investigated those and were able to offer remedy to the department and to the individuals involved. And so it's such a small subsection of the issues that we run into that I'm not concerned with some type of wholesale change.
Okay. And that extends down to areas beyond those that are traditionally used by city employees to where the public could be involved with.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
Yeah. And that lack of concern extends to areas that are not solely used by employees but could be used by the public.
So a public changering or something of that nature?
Yeah, like at a park or recreation center.
Yes, it would.
Okay. So no concerns by adding this resolution?
I don't think so, sir.
Okay.
Councilman Mcatee.
Thank you, Your Honor. James and I have talked. James was kind enough to call me, knowing where I stand on certain issues last week, and thank you, sir. And we had a good conversation. I'm going to vote against this, and I just wanted to explain why. I'm not trying to convince you to change your vote. But there are, correct me if I'm wrong, there are protections that the federal and state government give in this particular subject matter.
Correct. And I'd actually defer to Municipal Counsel on that.
Okay. So they have, they do. Now, it does not go as far in their protections as some of the companies and entities that you've referenced in your memo here. They give more protection, correct?
You're talking about private companies?
Yeah.
Yes, private companies can pretty much identify or adopt any policy that they would like to give. So there are private corporations that have extended these protections to their employees as well.
So, but I believe that we should not extend them at this time. We should wait for the federal and state governments to do it. So with that in mind, when the vote is taken, I'm going to vote no. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. And then I would only note on that that, you know, right now, those protections are, I'll use the word valuable at best, in terms of actually protecting our people. So I think that's why this verbiage to still an earlier conversation is critical, critical, I would say, in fact.
Okay. Any further comments? We have a motion in a second on the table. Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes seven to two. All right. That concludes the listed business under items from council. We'll go around the horseshoe. Why don't we start at Ward 8? Thank, thank you.
Did you just vote to pass? What did you pass?
We just passed the resolution found in 11E, amending our personnel policies to the effect that was just described.
So, or could you explain that to me, please, about transgender and the...
I think maybe we can get some staff with you to explain what, what just happened. Maybe...
I'd like to make a statement.
Well, we've just, we've completed the item. We're moving on, but you can sign up to speak under Citizens to be Heard.
You have to say it.
Well, you have to sign up. Okay. Councilman Stone, say.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to, on behalf of the Judiciary Committee, thank LaShawn Thompson, her staff with the municipal court on our penalty reduction program. We are now, as of December 16, we've, total collections are over $100,000. We have 652 cases that have been paid, and failure to appear dismissals are at 265. I always like to point out that this program is going to continue until the end of March. It's for tickets that were issued prior to July 1, 2017, and are in warrant status. What that means, if you will come and meet with our staff, there is a reduction in the amount of the fine. You'll get a warrant off your record, and so I'd encourage people to take advantage of this through March 31, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say the night at the Thunder House was electric. What a game for Oklahoma City Thunder to come back from that over 20-point deficit that they had. And I, I think that speaks to our city as a whole, just the strength that we have, resilience. But I also wanted to make mention to Councilman Cooper, thank you for speaking your truth today. And also, you said you talk a lot. We know that, but it's okay because it's a difference when you talk a lot and you actually have something to say. So thank you for what you said today. I also wanted to make mention of a couple of other things. I didn't get to say it earlier when we passed for our Teacher of the Month, but I wanted to commend Mrs. Watkins on just the great things she's done, obviously, in, in the community as a teacher and an adjunct professor, and the work that she does to shape young minds and being a product of Langston University. Also, commend to those efforts of the excellence of education that is being instilled of alumni that are out, able to go out in the community and make a difference. So that speaks to what she's done. I also wanted to send, I know we've, some of us may or may not have heard, but I wanted to send our thoughts to the family of two-year-old Raya Thomas. And this young lady was sleeping in her bed with her grandmother, and her, I found out through one of my classmates last night that her grandmother went to Northeast High School with me. She graduated a few years prior to me, but I am very familiar with their family. But I can say I know what this feels like because in 2006, my 10-year-old cousin was sleeping in his bed, and someone came up to the window and started shooting. And when he raised up, he caught a bullet to the head. And he was on life support for a day before, before he passed away. And it is very important for us, I know as of, as of yesterday, when I watched the news, there were no leads to this story. Somebody knows something. And I would ask an employee that, if you know anything, to please call our hotline, 405-297-1200. And the reason I ask for us to, to solve this case is because my cousin still hasn't been solved. And we're talking about 2006 for a murder of a 10-year-old, and we still haven't been able to solve that crime. But I know, and I'm, I'm very vigilant in what we know can take place if we all come together. And I know tonight that there is going to be a vigil for the family of this two-year-old young lady whose life was cut short at, I believe, the church's new dimensions on Britain, if I'm not mistaken. So I definitely wanted to send those condolences for that and to her grandmother, Shamitra Thomas, who was again with her, and she was also shot, but she did survive. On a more positive note, I did want to commend the ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the Foundation Arm of Beta Sigma Omega Chapter. Last Sunday, they recognized 77 young men that are doing great work in the city and just recognize them for their academic efforts and just being positive impacts in their communities, where they live and where they go to school throughout Oklahoma City. And it's, it's rare when you see that many young African-American men being acknowledged for doing great things in their community. And we also had the tree lighting at the East End on this past Friday. This is the first time we've ever had this. And I will say, it was very, very nice to see Santa. He lit the tree for us about 7 o'clock, and this is something new for our community. It hasn't been done in over 40 years that we've had a dedicated tree lighting service in our community of Northeast Oklahoma City. So we hope to start a new tradition, make it bigger and better every year, and make it a dedicated event for our community. And at the same time, we also learned about some of those businesses that are open in the East Point area of 23rd and Rhode Island. And one in particular is a gym fitness area called Lifetime Fitness. And I would encourage you all to just drive by, but he did tell me, and I'll tell you this, he said, your first time is free. So after y'all eat all that turkey and everything for Christmas, you have a free, free visitation to Lifetime Fitness and just serving the community. And as we talk about that holistic approach of what it looks like for health and wellness in our community, this is a great start because we don't actually have a dedicated gym facility until now. And, and this is what speaks to that. Oklahoma Civics Day, we also had that for, at OCCC with Generation Citizen, and I was able to participate as a community advisor and just to hear the great work that these young people are doing in our communities, at schools, talking about addressing police diversity, talking about the food insecurity, talking about pollution, climate, climate change, talking about even how they weren't getting communication in a high school. That happened at Southeast High School, and they created a way to better communicate through an app for their whole school body, student body. Those are things that I, I think we also should mention because the children are our future, and they're able to speak to the great things that are occurring. So I only have a couple more here, and then I'll be done. Another event that I did attend, and I'll bring them up because they service some of Oklahoma City and East Oklahoma City, is the Life Changes in Wellness. They had an amateur boxing tournament this past Saturday, and this is for our young people in the community. And with this wellness center, they also offer boxing, wellness academy, fitness tutoring, and they're going to be having an event the 22nd and the 23rd where they're going to just be giving out toys to the community. So it speaks to just their dedication and commitment to where they are and wanting to serve the people that are around them. And as we talk about the things that are happening, last Wednesday, we had the Northeast Food Security Symposium. And one of the things that came out of that, obviously, is some of the things that we have in our Plan OKC. So I am hoping today that we can initiate the search for and to begin our Local Food Policy Council. That's part of our Plan OKC efforts, and I think this is the most important time for us to execute that effort as we are looking to make our communities within Oklahoma City more food secure for the ones that are not. And there are plenty of people that I know are doing work, and I think it's important for us, again, even if we get someone that can represent each ward to speak to the food insecurity efforts or just to represent as a whole, I would like to see how we could get this implemented here very, very, very soon. And congratulations also to MAPS4. I know the question was asked, did I support it? Absolutely, because I know it's going to benefit a lot of our communities within Northeast Oklahoma City that have not been able to benefit previously. So we are excited, and the mayor and I went to over 30 churches, over 30 churches within a couple of months, just to speak about what is to come so the community could be aware of what they were voting on, whether they voted yes or no, but at least to have the information to know they were empowered about how this could impact and affect the communities that they are a part of in Northeast Oklahoma City or in Oklahoma City in general. And with that being said, I know we talked about this before, but the concern that I have and will continue until we completely have addressed it comfortably is the equity piece when it comes to local and minority investment and/or being able to be a part of the process of construction, being a part of, being, the building part of what this looks like for, for our city. So that's definitely a concern, and we will continue to bring that up, or I will, until we're comfortable with what we're going to do in that effort. So those are the things that I have. And when we talk about the Food Security Symposium, I do want to thank The Wall Street Journal. They did an article that was published yesterday in The Wall Street Journal about one of our residents, and I want to thank him for sharing his story. He talked about how he has a car, but because his car is not a reliable... He talked about how he has a car, but because his car is not a reliable source for him, he can only go within about a mile of where he lives. Otherwise, he has to take the bus for at least an hour to an hour and a half to go to the grocery store. These are the many stories of our community right now as we are looking for better efforts. And so, again, we pass the effort for this initiative to bring fresh fruit, fresh produce, fresh meats to our community with a full-service grocery store. So, again, these are the long-term impacts that will happen when we're able to feed a community. Until then, we'll continue to provide the transportation and the information that we need as far as resources are concerned. But our community is fatigued. There's fatigue because what turned into a couple of months of waiting for another option has turned into more than that. So, more broken promises to our community until we get something more reliable. So, that's a grave concern for me. But we'll continue to be vigilant as far as getting those resources to the community. So, that's all I have to say. And Merry Christmas, because I guess this is our last meeting before the New Year. So, happy holidays to everyone and also looking forward to a better 2020.
Well, I want to echo Councilwoman Nice's discussion about the symposium I got to attend last Wednesday. Thank you to the Urban Land Institute for helping host that and all the folks that worked to bring in those speakers, Dr. Reese and Dr. Lewis, and then Dr. Lowery up from Norman. I know I learned a lot. Food insecurity is a pretty big passion of mine. So, I read a lot and feel like I pay attention, but it was a really great conversation that they were able to present. A lot of research that Dr. Lowery presented really showed that while the area that the 7311 zip code is definitely the most in need, there are other food deserts in our city that I hope that we can learn how from addressing the most dire needs, ways that we can maybe work to increase healthy food access across the city. At one point, he showed a map of the metro area and all of the grocery stores and then showed a map of dollar stores. And they proliferate everywhere. And there is research done that shows that their business model is specifically to target areas that are already food insecure. And so, they are extracting wealth from our communities and impacting health poorly. They do it in rural areas, they do it in our city areas, and it is well documented that that is their business model. So, to protect the well-being and health of our communities, I'm excited to keep working on those issues. And I just appreciate Councilwoman Nice's leadership on that and her bringing those partners together last week to talk about a really important need in our city. I'd also like to thank all of the partners that came together on Friday for the Homelessness Task Force. We had a really great discussion. We got to hear results from the consultants' analytic insights about their, they interviewed over 40 community partners and discussed the findings of those interviews, particularly that the largest need that across social services, private business, and other partners working around housing and security in our city and state, that affordable housing was the number-one need. And safe and affordable housing and the need for up-to-code, you know, things that aren't falling down, ability to actually bring concerns about code enforcement and the safety of the place they live to their landlord without fear of eviction. So, it was well, it was a great discussion and look forward to, I believe we're going to have 12 more meetings over the coming year to discuss specific areas that they identified as needs of just further exploration. And I look forward to continuing that conversation. And relatedly, I wanted to talk about people sleeping outside because especially with the really cold temperatures we've been having and will continue to have, I appreciate our city planning department's efforts to keep the word out about our cold shelters for when it dips below 32 degrees. We have a number of community partners that have relaxed their restrictions on their overnight shelter beds, opening those up to folks so that they have safety in the cold. And I know, living and spending most of my time in the core of the city, I still see folks that, and I share with them that those cold shelters are open, and some folks don't want to go to those for safety or other reasons, concerns they have. So, I still see people camping and sleeping outside. I know there are certain areas of Ward 6 that folks tend to camp because they're close to services, they feel safe. And I recognize the concerns of safety and cleanliness and those sorts of things, but I also want to recognize that clearing out camps and telling people to move along is not actually solving any problems. It's just moving folks. And in fact, I had a few service providers approach me a few months or so ago saying that they had concerns that our police department had cleared out a camp and then just a week later, had a call from folks in the Farmers Market District saying that they have new people camping in their alley and wanted, and when outreach workers went to speak with those folks, it turned out that they had just been moved from their former site. So, I just want to ask for people's understanding and recognition that it's not a crime to be alive and not have a place to live, especially with these really cold temperatures, people are really at risk. We lose a lot of people who live outside every year. And I just, I want to remind people that they are people. And to truly address the issue, it's a long-term fix. It's not anything that we can just move people along and think things are solved. So, I just want to remind folks of that. And if anyone is interested in the cold shelter, you can always call 211 and they'll know when it's being hosted and can direct folks to the shelters that are open, what hours they accept people and how many so that we can get the information and supportive services to people that are better and need. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
I just wanted to announce yesterday, we did the ribbon cutting out at Station 29 at 8400 Southeast 164th. Former Councilman White stole a little bit of my thunder announcing that he was the first recipient of their services when they unfortunately had a fire in his greenhouse workshop she's had, I don't know what it was, something like that. So, congratulations to Ward 4 residents for getting a new fire station out there.
An '07 bond project, is that right?
Yes. Been a long time coming, yes.
Patient is the key.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a little history, in the past, we as council were afforded the opportunity to wish everybody a Merry Christmas over Channel 20. I don't think we did that this year, so I'm going to take this opportunity for Ward 3, Merry Christmas, and may you have a God-blessed New Year. Thank you, Your Honor.
First, I want to sincere thank you for your kind words, Councilperson Nice, a bit earlier, and thank you to every councilperson who supported the measure, the resolution earlier. And thank you to those who did not for actually talking with me the way that you all have. It's been great to, what do they call it, reach across the aisle. I also, to that point, I've been bragging, and I've said it to him already, but I want to do it publicly on Channel 20. Councilperson McAtee, if you all saw him on Flashpoint a couple of weeks ago, the Sunday before the MAPS vote, it moved me to tears when you said, when he said that he couldn't promise that MAPS4 and its homelessness investment would completely solve the problem that we're facing when it comes to getting people in housing and connecting them with services. But then he said, "But I'd rather go down fighting." I, my gosh, that was a, woo! I will never forget those words. I mean, it was a powerful moment. I mean, it was just beautiful. It was beautiful. I was grocery shopping when I was listening to that. So, it was telling what the people thought I was listening to. But I just wanted to publicly acknowledge those remarks. That was really something. So, thank you for those. Also, I wanted to say thank you to Award 2 neighborhood, Belle Isle West, for inviting me to join them to go look at some Christmas lights and to sit in judgment of those Christmas lights. No, it was wonderful. It was just wonderful being out there with them Sunday evening. Thank you to Lynn Garmon for that. And to my fellow members of the Oklahoma Film Critics Circle, thank you for voting this last week. We chose as our best film of the year, Once Upon a Time in Hollywood, the new Quentin Tarantino movie. And then we chose, for reasons beyond me, Martin Scorsese as Best Director for The Irishman. I don't know, save your three and a half hours, everybody, is what I would say, but apparently, I'm the minority in that opinion. But all the same, I wanted to say thank you to the Oklahoma Film Critics Circle for allowing me to still be a part of their group and commend them on a, I believe this will be their 12th year doing that work. So, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Years, and thank you all so much for these months together.
All right. Well, that concludes items from council. Now, we have item 12, City Manager Report.
Yes, sir. We have on today, we have several, one presentation that is on the development impact fees. Those were actually approved in 2016. And we, in that ordinance that was approved, it's a promise that we would bring forward an annual financial report. And so, this is both a financial report as well as what we're doing with the funds as well as what we're planning to do in the future. And so, just to give an update on development impact fees. So, it's Brent Bryant.
Good morning again, Brent Bryant, Finance Director. Today, we're going to do some financial highlights, background, the framework of our impact fees and how they came to fruition, and then on project updates and their next steps. Financial highlights through June 30 of 2019, we have approximately $15.1 million available to encumber in funds. We added approximately $8.3 million in this last fiscal year. And in FY19, we had about $1.4 million added of new project costs. Just for your information, the rate for residential development is 41 cents a square foot on, just for reference to that. Of that $15 million, approximately $11.3 million of that is designated for streets, $1.5 million is designated for trails, and $2.3 million is designated for parks. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Butler, our Planning Director, and he's going to tell you more about how the impact fees came to fruition.
Good morning, Jeff Butler, Planning Director. Just to give you a little bit of background as to how the impact fees came about, we started working on it actually in 2015 and went through a, I would say, an in-depth and really rigorous process that included stakeholders and the public and a lot of analysis. And in 2016, April of 2016, the ordinance was adopted by council, and that actually took effect in January of 2017 when we started collecting fees for both parks and streets. Then here we are today. We've had a couple of years of collections, and we'll talk about kind of how those are being used, how they're planned to be used. But a little more background and legal framework, the state law, which was enacted in 2011, actually allows us to collect impact fees for several things. The City of Oklahoma City has chosen to collect impact fees for water, wastewater, streets, and parks. And so, the legal nexus is important. I'll start at the top of this slide and talk about kind of the definition of what an impact fee is, what's different about an impact fee, and that's that it's a one-time charge, charged at the building permit phase. So, when somebody, whether it's a residence or a commercial development comes through, they're charged at that point for their impact to the street system and the park system. And of course, as I mentioned, water and wastewater. And that can only be used to build new capacity. So, to the extent that these developments generate the need for more capacity in our infrastructure systems, that is what the fees are charged for, and that's what the fees are used for, to build additional capacity and not for maintenance or repair or anything like that. So, the legal nexus is important. Impact fees have to be constrained by our, the need for those expenditures, the need for those fees, so they have to be attributable to that new development. And so, in the same way, a development needs to be able to benefit from those impact fees. And one of the reasons we show that is by having what we call benefit areas. So, in this case, you see a parks benefit areas, and there are five of them around the city. So, for example, the southwest benefit area, all fees collected in that benefit area must be expended in that benefit area. So, any new development, say a single-family home built in the southwest area, you know, they may benefit from a new regional park or a new community or local park in that area, and so, that's where the money will be spent. And in the same way, streets impact fees, there are many more benefit areas, 14, and it's a little more complicated because of the different traffic patterns. There are a lot of analysis that went into this. But suffice it to say, in the core and the infill or the, what you see there is the blue and the green, those areas, the average trip distance is a little bit less, impact fees are a little bit less, whereas in the rural and suburban areas, the yellow and the white, trips are longer, and so, the impact fees are a little bit higher. And as I said, any fees collected in each of these districts must also be expended in that district, and that helps us to meet that legal nexus. And so, just real quick, as far as the mechanics, the parks and trails fees are based on projected growth and the levels of service in the planned park system as presented in the Parks Master Plan. And the streets fees are based on our analysis of traffic generated by new development. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric Winger, and he'll talk about parks and public works, the fees and the projects themselves, and how they're being expended, and will be available for questions afterwards as well.
Thank you, Eric Winger, Public Works Director. So, as we work into project updates, obviously, with two years of collections, some funds have been received in the benefit areas that were described in both parks and for trails and for transportation. And so, I'm going to review those pretty quickly with you now, but we'll start out with parks. These are the five benefit areas that are for parks and trails, and what's included on the map is the collections to date in each of those benefit areas. You're going to note that the benefit totals are quite different, and again, this follows the development. So, when new construction is completed in each of these areas, the fee is collected. You can see some higher-growth areas in southwest and northwest Oklahoma Cities compared to southeast. But with that, over $6.3 million has been collected to date. And there is a project that was approved in October of 2018 for the purchase of 130 acres for a new park in northwest Oklahoma City. So, this is just west of Portland Avenue and just north of Northwest 150th Street. But again, as the fees increase, it makes the availability of projects more pronounced. Obviously, in some of the areas with more than $1 million in fee, park projects can start to be planned. But in some of the other areas where we are just over $100,000 in collections, sometimes we're limited on what we can do until additional fee is collected. We can also combine the impact fees with other funds. So, in the case of bond issues or other funding opportunities, it's not intended that all the projects have to be completely standalone, impact fee-based. They can be organized into multiple funding sources and larger projects created. For the streets benefit areas, we actually have 14 benefit areas. So, it's not the same areas, and that's why this map looks quite different. And it was set up, again, is what Jeff mentioned, there is a different nexus in looking at different things of what occurred on the transportation system versus parks and trails. And so, this is what you see. They don't line up specifically with council wards. And so, as you look at the different shades of greens and you look at the different symbols, so whether it be core or new growth areas or infill, we are collecting those fees separately for each of those areas that are identified on this map. This is a summary of those fees to date, so more than $15 million has been collected in the streets impact. in the streets impact fee. You will see this is the different benefit areas, and again, I'll just highlight some of those that you see in the middle of this column. These are generally the areas of northwest and north-central Oklahoma City that are seeing the highest rates of growth. Then you're going to see some of the other areas that simply have not just collected nearly as much in funding. Some of these would be extreme far-southeast Oklahoma City and just some other outlying areas that just simply aren't seeing the number of new building permits created. But we have proceeded very quickly with the amounts over two years, created several projects. And so initial engineering reports were completed and we presented those to the council this summer. There were 12 projects that are identified and given consideration to proceed quickly. And so those 12 candidate projects, and I'll highlight those in just a moment, are in the design. One is in an AE selection and one is in a coordination with the city of Yukon. But what I'm happy to report today is that the final reports have arrived in our office as expected by the end of this calendar year, and we're reviewing those now. The reason those final reports are important is it identifies a longer list of projects so that as funds come available, we can quickly proceed with additional work. These are some of the project types and examples of what you can expect to see in some of the transportation improvements. And I'm just going to show a few examples of some widenings, some reconfigurations, and then also adding new traffic control-like signals. We went ahead and included in this project list, this was a slide that was utilized earlier this year in a presentation, just to show by ward the projects that were priority traffic projects identified on those early preliminary reports. And so these are the projects that are now underway. I won't review each of those. You'll actually notice there's a few more on here. It appears as though there's more, but the ones with stars at the end of their locations are actually in two different wards. They're the same projects, so, but there are 12 that are currently underway. And then these are four of the engineering consultants that were hired to actually do those designs. And so this gives you a status of each of those, and it's mentioned, majority of them are in design and finishing designs for construction to begin in 2020. We do have some interviews that were recently completed at Western and Memorial Road. It's a very large project, and so we are actually using an independent engineer to do that work. And then you'll see at the bottom of the page at Northwest 10th and Check Hall Road, currently coordinating an agreement with the city of Yukon as a coordinated project. So work is proceeding in each of these areas. Here's some of the examples of some of the improvements that you can expect to see. So this is Reno and Mustang Road, be adding right-turn lanes to increase the capacity of that intersection, which has been highlighted as a priority in that benefit area. Another example would be MacArthur and Interstate 40, another high-traffic area, not looking to add lanes, the right-of-way is very restricted, but there is an ability to reconfigure the lane assignments, to actually look at re-signalization and address some of the westbound off-ramp traffic as well. So not always is it a lot of heavy new construction, sometimes it's a reconfiguration of the existing system. And then some of the other examples, again, it does provide for addition of new traffic signals. This one's at Anderson Road and I-40. It would be adding a traffic signal at the base of that off-ramp there. But again, as the engineers are working in each of those benefit areas, they're doing traffic studies, they're looking at ADT, which is traffic count, they're looking at planning and Plan OKC, looking at future development projections, and they're prioritizing those projects in each of those benefit areas that are included in these reports. And so our next steps as we move forward, as we're finalizing the design on the 12 projects that I just highlighted on the previous slides, the construction will expect to begin on each of those in 2020. The final reports are in our office being reviewed now, so the list of projects is going to increase significantly in each of the benefit areas. We'll be bringing those reports back to the city council for your review and approval. But then we also plan to continually update these reports. So in the high-growth areas of Oklahoma City, especially as it relates to traffic improvements, we see that we may need to update the reports more regularly, possibly annually, but in a lower-growth area, it may not be necessary to do those complete and full reviews. And so the reports may have different update dates just based on the amount of improvements occurring. So we want to make sure that the project recommendation list stays very current and to the need of the day. So with that, lots of progress. I think that you will see some additional items on future city council meetings beginning next year as we launch these projects out and additional announcements on OKCGOV as we make our residents more aware. We can answer any questions that you might have today.
So I'm going to assume that you can't use impact fees to repave roads.
It's not, it's primary purpose, so no. So it really is intended with the impact fees that you're increasing the capacity of the system, so it cannot be used for maintenance.
Okay.
Now, if there's a project and we're reconfiguring an intersection, it requires some limited repaving for the reconfiguration, but it's not for paving mile-by-mile through Oklahoma City.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you all. I do appreciate the leadership, the Finance Department helping to manage the funds and then Planning and Public Works and Parks working together. Doug was here also, Doug Cupper. I appreciate their leadership and how we're using these funds and managing this because it really is challenging not getting enough money a lot of times in one area to do a single project, but working to combine those with other funds to be able to complete projects. I do appreciate their leadership on this. The only other thing we have is the sales and use tax report and another good report on sales tax. Sales tax growth for the year is about 3.9%. We are expecting it to slow in the second half of the year. Russell's been talking to us about that. One thing I would mention is we're at about 9% growth on use tax for the year, but we have seen the last two months, we saw a decline in November, which was the first decline we've seen in a long time, and then about 1/2% growth for this month. And what we're seeing in the detail is a lot of that's tied to oil and gas-related businesses. And so it's, you know, it's something that could have an effect or be an indicator for us within the economy, just to some of that slowing that we're expecting. So something we'll continue to monitor and keep the council informed on. That's all I have.
All right. Now we're on to citizens to be heard. Like, remind everybody to keep your comments to three minutes. First one is Rosetta Funchess. I probably obliterated your last name, but, Funchess, I was close.
Good afternoon. I'm going to keep this short, but I wanted to say something about the, one of the things that you just passed today about the bathroom situation. And I had another point, too, that I'd like to say, and I'm going to try to say it within three minutes. But I'm thinking about women. And if a man thinks he's a woman and he's, you know, with a huge body, he needs to see a psychiatrist. See, men here on this earth are trying to change God's laws. God made man and woman. Now, if you, if he made you a man, then you should, and you think you're a woman, you need to see a psychiatrist. And I feel sorry for those that have been misused by people because of the way they walk, but you still need to see a psychiatrist. Man cannot change what God made perfect. And so I don't think it's fair to send my little girl into a bathroom with a big man thinking he's a woman. And see, the media has made it all like everything is okay. The media just passes on down like it's the right thing to do. And this is supposed to be a Christian nation. We're not following God's laws. See, we taking laws in our own hands. That's one thing, okay? Other thing is like, when you all come out to meetings in communities, you know, political meetings, campaigning, then the people running for office talk too long. And then they, at the end, they give you, they tell you you can ask questions, but they give you a card to write on. And then they shuffle the card around and pick who, pick the question that they want. And that's not fair. So what I'm trying to say now is you need to give people a chance to, in the public, to say something. And I'm wondering, is it planned that you all do this on purpose so people can't ask questions? Or what? I'm just, I'm known to speak my mind. So I'm just saying that if you could give people a chance to express themselves after you come out to political events. Thank you.
Next person is Ronnie Kirk.
My address is 2328 North Missouri, from Ward 7. First of all, I'd like to say, this morning, Mr. Ward, God, our new police chief, we need to help him help us. And when, throughout the whole city, you know, when they come out to talk to you, we need to share as much information as we can to help our police chief and our police department throughout the whole city. You know, we need to let the young people know when a car is taken, it's actually unauthorized use. It's not a weapon until you hit somebody, kill somebody, or terror someone. We just need to let them know this in a manner that they'll understand. And I'd also like to say thanks to our Ward 7 council rep. When I was here in November of 15, she fought so hard to keep this building from built in a community where a bunch of houses were. She fought so hard, even though it didn't go the way that everybody expected for it to, she fought so hard for them. And our city council as a whole, y'all are the best group assembled to help our city go forward. When we had Ward 4, MAPS 4, last, on the 10th, Mr. Russell Perry let me get on the radio and I told the people on Northeast and his listening community, y'all helped vote this in, helped vote it in. They're trying to get this city developed for all of us. Y'all helped vote it in. Let them know we want something too. And I'd also like to say, we're still planning on going into the future with a school of common knowledge, sharing experience for the kids from all communities. Me, Ronnie Kirk, my wife, Shalisa Rogers, Gary Rogers, been with me for 15 years, my left arm, we're going to make this school happen. We're going to give them a sharing of common knowledge to all these young people. You know, about people here saying they was going to help me teach these kids, they're still with me. We're going to make it happen. And thanks for taking this city so far into the future. We're all going to accomplish something out of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. And the other person who signed up is Michael Washington, who is not here. So we are going to go to executive session.
Vice Mayor?
We'll be back.
Oh, no, just real quick. I forgot to say, and I would, terrible, thank you to Freedom Oklahoma for their efforts today as well. My goodness, if I didn't say that. Thank you.
Thanks.